Hello?
We won't wait for him, but he's here.
Surprise.
Let's go. This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pikel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item is the Board Member Oath of Office. Tonight, Directors-elect Don Barlow, Karen McLaughlin, and Stephanie Whitehorn will take a ceremonial oath of office. Directors-elect, will you join me in front of the board table? It is an honor that you are elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a Director of our school district if you be empowered by the Minnesota legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision to board with extensive participation of the community, in vision the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public school. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to obtain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the Superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Directors-elect, you have already signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, and now you will publicly affirm your commitment to that oath. Raise your right hand and please read your oath.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of this and of this day, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 535 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Welcome to the Board, Director Whitehorn, and back to the Board Directors, McLaughlin and Barlow. Let's have a round of applause. We'd also like to welcome the family members of our newly sworn-in Board Members. If you could stand if you're here. Item 2.1 is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at RochesterSchools.org/assembly. Comments to the Board. It is important for the School Board to hear from our stakeholders regarding issues that impact our students, staff, families, and schools. We welcome communication via email, phone call, at our community engagement listening sessions, and here during comments to the Board. The purpose of comments to the Board is to give community members an opportunity to provide input directly to the Board about issues that fall within our authority. The Board and Superintendent do not respond directly to the speaker's comments during the meeting, but may follow up with the speaker if requested and appropriate. Persons who want to make comments to the Board must fill out the online form by 5:00 PM on Monday before the School Board meeting to sign up for a time slot. The form is available on the RPS website and the Assembly main page. Policy 206 and Procedure 206A set the time, place, and manner procedures and restrictions on comments to the Board. By participating in the public comment period, each speaker agrees to abide by this public comment procedure. Speakers, when your name is called, please come to the table. If you have written materials for the Board, please provide them to the Assistant School Board Clerk prior to your remarks, and she will distribute them to Board Members. Choose a microphone to speak into and be seated. Please direct your remarks to the School Board. You will have three minutes to speak, and the timer will be displayed right in front of me. Please begin your remarks by stating your name. Our first speaker tonight is Nicole Lehman. Our next item on the agenda is, under reorganization of the School Board, 4.1, election of officers. Minnesota Statute 123B14 specifies that School Board Officers, Chair, Clerk, and Treasurer, must be elected for a one-year term as soon after January 1st as practicable. In addition, School Board Policy 202, School Board Officers, specifies that a Vice Chair is also elected. We will now take officer nominations. Nominations do not require a second. If there is only one nomination for an office, the individual will be elected by acclamation. If there are multiple nominations for an office, a vote is required. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Chair. Director Marvin.
I'd like to nominate Kathy Nathan as Chair.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Chair? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Chair? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Chair are closed. With only one nomination for the Office of Chair, Kathy Nathan is elected by acclamation.
That was close.
Nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice Chair. Director McLaughlin.
I nominate Julie Workman for the Office of Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? There are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Vice Chair are closed. With only one nomination for the Office of Vice Chair, Julie Workman is elected by acclamation. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Clerk. Director Workman.
I nominate Jean Marvin.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Clerk? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Clerk? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Clerk are closed. With only one nomination for the Office of Clerk, Jean Marvin is elected by acclamation.
That was a real nail-biter.
Nominations are now in order for the Office of Treasurer. Jean Marvin.
I'd like to nominate Justin Cook.
Are there any other nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Are there any further nominations for the Office of Treasurer? If there are no further nominations, nominations for the Office of Treasurer are closed, and with only one nomination for the Office of Treasurer, Justin Cook is elected by acclamation. Having completed the elections, I will now read the resolution for action. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Kathy Nathan as its Chair for a term of one year, effective upon election on January 7th, 2025, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Julie Workman as its Vice Chair for a term of one year, effective upon election on January 7th, 2025, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District elect Jean Marvin as its Clerk for a term of one year, effective upon election on January 7th, 2025, and be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 elect Justin Cook as its Treasurer for a term of one year, effective upon election on January 7th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. If there is no further discussion, all in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved. Thank you, Board Members. Our next item is our review of the Code of Ethics, Policy 209. Policy 209 Code of Ethics requires that the School Board review the policy on an annual basis. Board Members, as is our usual practice, I'm asking each of you to discuss one or two components of the ethics policy that you believe is important for your service on the School Board. Also, if you have any recommendations for the Policy Committee to consider in reviewing this policy at its next meeting, please note them tonight in your discussion. Director Workman?
Yes, some things, these three tie together, maybe it's four. Under Section 2, General Statement of Policy, Letter A, Number 3 and 4, listen to the opinions and views of others, including but not limited to other School Board Members, administration, staff, students, and community members, and vote my conscience after informed discussion unless I abstain because of a conflict of interest exists. In conjunction with Section C, Number 2, recognize that the authority rests with the School Board in legal session, not with the individual members of the School Board, except authorized by law, and Section F, 7, guard the confidentiality of information that is protected under applicable law. I think this is especially important for me because many times I'm asked by someone about how I'm going to vote on an issue, and my standard response generally tends to be, "You will know when I make my vote." And I say that because no decision is ever final until a full board meets on it, and there's always a possibility that I will be presented with new information that I had not considered in my reasoning, so that's why these are important for me.
Anybody else? Director Marvin.
Under General Statement of Policy, Number 7, be primarily motivated by a desire to provide the best possible education for the students of my school district. And as Board Members, we have to make a lot of decisions about a lot of things, but it's always, always has to be students first, and they have, we have diverse student population with diverse needs, but I think that that's the thing we have to continue to remind ourselves about. It's what's going to be the best for the kids who are going to school here.
Anybody else have anything they want to select?
Yeah, there's one I'd like to maybe comment on, and it deals with, as a member of the School Board, one of those "I will" type of statements. And number 3 in particular, that says, "Listen to the opinions and views of others, including but not limited to other School Board Members, administration, staff, students, and community members." You know, for me, that is so important because it's easy to only listen to those who may appear to be the loudest, or who may be from a position of placement in the community, those who are leaders, and not necessarily representative of those who are our students, our stakeholders, and those who actually can benefit from what we do. And so this simply reminds me of the importance of why we're here and what our primary focus should be.
Director McLaughlin.
Thinking about the year ahead, one of the roles that I fulfill on this Board is on the Legislative Committee, and also thinking through the fact that we have some budget decisions that are being made at the board table tonight, and also reflecting on the fact that we recently passed an important referendum for the district, that I focus on the policy items D2 and 4. I'm sorry, 2 and 5. Attempt to obtain adequate financial support for the district's, school district's programs. I think that's something that Legislative Committee is in the process of working towards, and also assume the responsibility for prudent fiscal management of the school district budget. I see that as applicable to our decision tonight about the balanced budget process, and also using the referendum dollars wisely, so I look forward to doing that this year.
Director Cook?
I first echo Director Marvin's highlighting of the commitment to center students in all decisions that are made, and also to follow on with that, to recognize that each of us as Board Members are doing that, and that it is often possible to have an earnest disagreement, or have a difference in point of view that is, that are both centered on what is best for students. And I really do give everyone here the benefit of the doubt that that is exactly where you're coming from, and I look forward to instances where we can further our own understandings by finding different ways of going about centering students and coming up with different differences of what is, what is the best path forward. And along those lines, I also resonate with the A9 point, the commitment to recognize the need to represent all children, all parents and guardians, and all community members. All of us are informed by our particular set of life experiences and the communities that we've come from, and I think do a good job collectively of letting those different perspectives kind of echo in this space. But I think in addition to that, we all individually have the responsibility to look out for the entire system and all students collectively, and recognize that, you know, while my kids attend three particular schools in the district right now, I'm not here to just represent those three schools, or just the kids that are in the programs like mine are, or something like that. So, yeah, that's, those are the points that resonate with me.
Director Whitehorn.
But I would say, under, I do agree with points 7 and 9 in A, which is what Director Cook just spoke on, the need to represent all of our children, parents, and guardians, and community members. I just think it's very important that we have a voice for some of the people that are not sitting here on the Board, which as a new member, I hope to be able to provide some of that. Also, as a new member, to inform myself about the proper duties and functions as a school member, which is A8, so that I can be effective in this role as I continue on this journey. And then C1, to respect the rights of others to have and express opinions, as I think has been mirrored here today, that we want to have effective discussion. I think it's important that everybody does not think the same, so that we're able to come to some common grounds, and I think that everybody's voice has value, and everybody's opinion has value, as we all have our separate lenses through which we're viewing the world. So hopefully, we're able to create policies and implement things that come to a consensus amongst, amongst minds.
Well, for me, I, and I think other Board Members count, are so fortunate that we have a good working relationship with the Superintendent, but it's always good to remember B4, which is recognize that my responsibility exercised through the actions of the School Board as a whole is to see that the schools are properly run, not to run them myself. And combined with that is E4, participate in School Board action after considering the recommendation of the Superintendent, and only after the Superintendent has furnished adequate information supporting the recommendation. I think as a Board, we have done a much better job in the past few years, asking and being clear to the Superintendent about the information that we would like him to provide to us before we make a decision, and he and the Cabinet and staff have been good, very good, at providing us the information that we need, and I look forward to those kinds of in-depth information that leads to our decision-making continuing. Anything else, Board Members, on the Code of Ethics? Great. Item 4.3 is School Board Committee Assignments. Policy 213, School Board Committees, identifies the standing committees of the School Board, and Policy 213-1R, Community Advisory Committees and Liaison Organizations, identifies the community advisory committees and liaison organizations that School Board Members serve on. Some of these committees meet on a calendar year schedule, and some meet on a school year schedule. School Board Committee Assignments are reviewed twice a year, once in January following the reorganization of the School Board, and once in the summer prior to the beginning of the school year. The recommendations in the agenda item designate the continuing assignments and term dates for Board Members. So for the 2024-25 school year, for community engagement, Director Barlow and Director Marvin will continue on the Community Engagement Committee, and Director Whitehorn will join them. For the Legislative Committee, Director McLaughlin and Director Workman will continue on the Legislative Committee, and Director Cook will join them. On the Policy Committee, Vice Chair Workman, Chair Nathan, and Clerk Marvin will consist of the Policy Committee. For the Advisory and Community Committees, Director Whitehorn will join Director Barlow on the Parent-Family Engagement Committee. The Community Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee will be Director Marvin and Director McLaughlin. The Reconsideration Committee will be Director Cook. The Insurance Trust Committee, Director McLaughlin. The Rochester Public School Foundation Liaison will be Director Cook. Student School Board will be Director Marvin. The Community Budget Advisory Committee will be Director Cook and Director McLaughlin. And the Minnesota State High School League will be Director Barlow, whose term will expire July 31st of 2025. The MSBA Delegate Assembly Representatives will be Director Workman and Director McLaughlin. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts, a virtual attendance by the Chair, and any other Board Members may attend those Board of Director meetings. Meet and Confer will be the Board Chair, and the executive team is the Board Chair and Vice Chair and Superintendent. So thank you for volunteering, for continuing your service or joining service on the committees. Director Workman.
Yes, one additional fact I'd like to mention, the MSBA Delegate Assembly is a two-year term, and Karen and I just finished our second year, so there will be nominations. You can self-nominate as well. I believe it's in September, and if there are more candidates who want to serve from the area, seats that are available, then we have an election. Otherwise, it's kind of like what we do tonight.
And will the change in the bylaws for the MSBA change the number of?
Yes, that will change, and there is a session at the convention.
But will the number that we can send?
No, ours, we're fine for our area.
We'll stay for two.
Yep.
Okay.
I do believe, though, that they don't want more than three Board Members from the same Board.
Okay. Item 4.4 is the Review of the School District Mission Statement. Policy 104, School District Mission Statement, requires the School Board will review the school district's mission, vision, and goals annually, especially when members of the School Board change. Our mission, Rochester Public Schools' mission, is to inspire, challenge, and empower all students with the knowledge and skills required to reach their full potential, to contribute to future generations, and to become involved members of a global community. You will see that we have an agenda item later tonight to kick off an initiative to update our mission, vision, values, and brand in 2025, so this might be the last time we read this at the kickoff meeting in January. The goals of Rochester Public Schools are reflected in the strategic plan. The RPS Strategic- The RPS Strategic Plan has fifteen essential objectives, each of which is a building block of the world-class school system we are creating. For those of you in the room or watching online who might not have seen them, these building blocks are prominently displayed at the back of the Board Room, and that same graphic is available in the agenda item tonight. Board Members, all of the objectives are in our agenda item. And for the purpose of discussion of this item, I'm going to ask if anybody has any comments or any of the Strategic Plan initiatives that they would like to highlight. We had a somewhat significant discussion of these and we talked about the A, B, C, D because we planned when some of these key initiatives would be coming back to the Board. We have an agenda item later tonight on the Balanced Budget Model that is one of the building blocks of the Strategic Plan. But if anybody has any observations or comments to make regarding our mission statement or goals or Strategic Plan, now is the time to make them. No? Well, I think that that's good. I think part of it is that we work the Strategic Plan in almost every meeting at multiple agenda items. And if you know anything about our calendar for 2025, starting in the latter half of 2025, we're going to be starting a process to talk about the next three-year Strategic Plan with significant community feedback. So stay tuned for that. Item five point one is Information and Outreach, our Board Member Committee Updates. Does any Board Member have updates from their committees that they would like to share? Director Marvin?
Yes, from our Rochester Student School Board, Julia Banky, Banky, sorry, a student is here to give a brief update about what our high school students are working on. They have been, they represent the three general high schools in Rochester, and Julia is one of the leaders.
All right. Hi, my name is Julia Banky and I'm the President of the Mayo Student School Board. The citywide student school board made a change this year in what the schools will be responsible. That's like century jam in Mayo. Each school will meet and share what's happening at their schools with each other and then with the Superintendent, which will be at our monthly citywide meetings. On top of that, each school meets outside of the citywide student school board meeting, including the rest of their school, so just at their school. Recently, we were asked to collect data on the cell phone policies at our school. Some of the formatting ways that we did it were interviews, forms, just going to people and talking to them. At Mayo, we found that in-person interviews were best because it's easier to talk to another human than it is to talk to a computer. A lot of that was, we've seen in the past with like panorama surveys and the things we've sent out, that not all people are comfortable submitting data that they maybe don't necessarily want their name to, so that's why we went with the interview. But with the interviews, we were able to get more anecdotal information and like the forums were more specific questions. Some of the questions for at least our interview and what we talked about at the school board meeting were, what are the pros of the cell phone policy? What are the effects on you of the cell phone policy? And would you change or get rid of the cell phone policy? The three high schools came together at our last meeting and we talked about the pros and cons. The pros being no phones equals less distractions during class, it's easier to engage in lessons and with each other, focusing on homework in class, you have less of it outside, and then it helps students to get less stress and rely less on checking messages. Nope, but there are some cons to this because no phones can create anxious feelings about not being able to communicate with like your family or friends, or fear of missing important news, messages, information. You can't listen to music during work time and it makes some tasks harder to do. Some of those tasks are language barriers or five oh four things. Overall, the most said comment that I heard and from the other schools was that cell phones should be able to be used during like free time or work time because there are some days in class where we're all sitting there and we have all of our work turned in, but because we can't go on our phones, you're just sitting there and doing nothing because you're not always going to want to talk to other people. But in conclusion, as I said, most people said they wouldn't get rid of the cell phone policy, which is a major plus, they would just change it. There are some things we would like to do the next time we do an outreach like this. We would like to reach out further, more people. A lot of our things were just going into like cafeterias or sending out those forums, which only branches out to like people we know, people we like go and talk to, and we would like to reach that out more. That is all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Members, any other reports from?
Well, I will add that I attended the Cape Family Engagement graduation at Overland today and was able to see the end of the workshop session and was able to see the relationships that had been developed among the participants in Cape as well as our, our trainers, Jared Grayler, the Principal, and Brianna Bly and Michelle Severson and Jennifer Spindler-Craggy. It was, it was exactly, Board Members, I hope you all have the opportunity to go see them in action because it's exactly what we've been hearing about, about family engagement and what the potential for the Cape program can be. They were all excited. They wanted to go talk to people about getting more people to enroll. They wanted everybody to know that this was a great opportunity and that they had learned so much. And I think we found some ambassadors through that program who are going to be able to spread the word. So that's just a little report from the field that Cape is doing what we are hearing that is doing. And there are six, I think, I heard that there are six new cohorts starting in the spring at six buildings. So we'll have a chance to, to see what they're doing this spring. Director Workman?
Yes, as the Board is aware, the Legislative Committee met relatively recently and you approved a resolution for us to take to the Delegate Assembly, which Karen and I did. Since then, we've been putting together a priorities list and we'll be working together with Superintendent Pekel and whatever your title is, Mr. Carlson, on, on cementing those. And we will have those to you for review on Friday in order to have some advanced thought before the study session next Tuesday.
Any other comments, Board Members? Director Whitehorn?
I just want to publicly thank everybody for their support that I was able to get to this space tonight. Thank you to all of my friends and family that came out to support me tonight and the people viewing online. I just really hope to be able to be effective in this position. I do hope to, you know, continue to learn and receive education. I, I did receive an acceptance letter through the School Board Partners, which is a national organization to be part of their seventh cohort. So hopefully I'll be able to receive more information and mentorship through that program as well so that I can bring some of those things back to our Board to make us more effective. I think everyone here is doing a wonderful job. I look forward to working with everyone here and I just hope to be able to be a little addition, a little spice.
Thank you. We're awfully glad you're here, too. Our next item is our Consent Agenda, items six point one through six point eight. Would any Board Member like any item removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration?
Director McLachlan?
I would like to remove item six point four for separate consideration.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of item six point four?
So moved.
Seconded.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda with the exception of item six point four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Consent Agenda of six point one through three and six point five through eight have been approved.
Is that the book banned one? Is that also book banned?
Sorry, no comments for the audience. We'll get to that in just a minute.
Is that the one, though?
We'll get to it in just a minute.
Okay.
We will now take up item six point four, Approval of Report to MDE on Removal of Book from Elementary School Media Center. Director McLachlan?
I would like to speak briefly on this agenda item, and it's the reason that I asked for it to be removed and considered separately from the Consent Agenda. Is it proper for me to give my whole conversation now or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. I very much recognize in the agenda item and attachments that are attached in our assembly that, under Policy six oh six point five, that Superintendent Pekel's decision about removal of this book from the Elementary School Media Center is a final decision with no opportunity to appeal. And the decision for the Board tonight is simply to authorize the Superintendent to submit a report on the challenged book, The Rainbow Parade, to the Department of Education. I do want to speak on this issue because I, I'm concerned that, I recognize Superintendent's decision and I, and I very much respect the work that he does for the district, but I worry at this point on this particular item that this is a very slippery slope that we might be going down by removing this book from the Elementary Media Center.
Absolutely.
I look at this as a couple different ways. One of them is I, when I started looking at this agenda item, I'm concerned to some degree about the transparency of this decision, that, that it's on the Consent Agenda until we just removed it. And I would, I view that as semi-transparent. And the reason I say it that way is that we recently approved Policy six oh six point five at the Board Meeting on December third of 2024. So it was about a month ago, so a recent, recent policy approval, it was a new policy. And I went back and reviewed the Board action at that time, and it struck me that, in giving a little bit of history here, in this policy was first presented to the Board in September. And one of my Board colleagues raised some concerns and some questions about the policy in September, and it came back to the Board on the consent, I'm, no, I'm sorry, on the, on the regular agenda on December third. And one of the questions that my Board colleague raised was about transparency of any decisions regarding removal of library materials from the school libraries. And the answer was that, that it is transparent because the policy provides, again, what we're doing tonight, a report to the Commissioner has been added to include School Board action prior to submitting a report to the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education. So that reporting requirement for the School Board is the answer to the concern about transparency. And I rec, I see that as semi-transparent but not fully transparent. And it further concerned me then that tonight the action is on the Consent Agenda that could just be approved without further discussion that we're having now, and that's why I asked to remove it for discussion here tonight. That, I also reviewed the policy that was passed in December, on December third, six oh six point five. And in reading Dr. Pekel's memo supporting his decision and that policy together, I view it as, in my mind, that that policy provided him with the legal protection under that policy either way he decided about removing this book or not removing the book. I think the policy sufficiently supported either decision that he was presented with. I also note that, I struggled a little bit when I was looking at this yesterday about the fact that that policy was, the six oh six point five was not in place at the time of the original request to remove the book. I'm not sure where I come down on that completely, but just note that that was another concern of mine, that the request to remove predated the policy. Dr. Pekel's memorandum also addresses a case that has proceeded through the Minnesota Courts, and I should, for those of you who don't know my background, I am an attorney and I practiced in the criminal law area for many years, so knew how to find that case and actually knew about it but hadn't read it recently, so I did. And what I want people to know about that decision is, number one, it's a Court of Appeals case, and very interestingly, if any attorneys are listening, it was, there's a three-member panel of the Court of Appeals. It's very rare to have a published opinion from the Court of Appeals. It's even more rare to have a Court of Appeals decision that has the three panel members of the judges at the Court of Appeals, each making a different decision about the issue that was presented to them. There was a controlling opinion written by one of the judges, there was a consenting opinion by another judge, and then a dissenting opinion by a third judge. They all had different reasons for what they decided, but it was very interesting from an attorney perspective, that it's very rare to see something like that. And what it indicates to me as an attorney is that there was no consensus about that decision and how to view the issues that were presented there. So I wanted to point that out. I also did want to point out that, so the Court of Appeals issued a decision in February of 2024, and that decision has actually been appealed to the Minnesota Supreme Court. And there were oral arguments on that case in October, October eighth. And if anyone is super interested in this topic, they are available on the court website to listen to that oral argument. But my point of all of this is that I view this as the, Dr. Pekel references the, you know, basic concept of what is essentially a case of indecent exposure, but I view it as not really settled law at this time because the Supreme Court has not made a decision based on those oral arguments in October. I also point this out because in looking at the, so the removal of the book, I actually have not, I don't have a copy of the book. So I did find references to it online and looked at some of the pages that I believe that Dr. Pekel was concerned about. And what I want others to know is that I really had to look at those pictures and study them and study those photos to recognize the connection, not only of that Minnesota case, but also to understand what the concern was about, in, in reading his memo and understanding what the concern was about that particular book. And the, I refer to them as photos, but they're really illustrations because it's essentially, it's a cartoon type of illustration. And what I point out in reference to the Minnesota case of expo, indecent exposure that that case represents is it, the connection to the children's book, I see in combining those two things, and it's not a huge point of his memo, but I think it's worth discussing, is it was really hard for me to see which photo even connected to that case. And I would ask the questions of looking at the illustration. It very well could be a trans woman in that, what would be viewed as exposing body parts, or it could be a drag queen. We don't know who that is, and I, I think that that plays some role in how this could be analyzed here. So I view particularly the reference to that Minnesota case as very factually different from the, the concerning contact, content and visual, essentially public nudity in the decision to remove the book. In addition, I also very much appreciate the letter from, first of all, let me start here. In addition to Dr. Pekel's memorandum, we also have correspondence from Tammy Van Moore, who is the Licensed Media Specialist at Franklin Montessori, I thank her and her committee for the work that was put into getting us to tonight. We also, more recently, received a letter from the Rochester Public Library, signed by the Library Director, the Deputy Director, and Head of Youth Services. I appreciate their input here and their concern about the decision that was made. And there was one point I wanted to reference. What the Rochester Public Library letter says, quote, "Other children's titles contain similar innocent depictions of nudity and are considered classics in children's literature." That statement reminded me of my childhood in reading the Marie Sendak book of, I won't give the name because I don't necessarily want people to connect it to removing books from schools, but it represents a child falling into, I think it was a cup of soup. And I think that that's what's referenced here when we talk about classic children's literature that has similar innocent depictions of nudity in a similar context. Finally, reference- Finally, referencing the information from our licensed media specialists, one of the things that occurred to me in thinking about this issue is that I fully believe and strongly believe that it's important to rely on the expertise of people who are knowledgeable in their areas of expertise. I equate it to following the science. I think we also need to follow the expertise that we have here in our district. And I think I'd feel differently about that if the recommendation of the committee had not been a nine to one recommendation to keep the book in the library. So finally, what I'm asking the board to consider here in the context of my comments tonight is, one, potentially a consideration of modest modifying the policy six oh six point five, or the procedure that I don't believe has been issued yet, to very specifically, I think one modification we could make that I think would help with the transparency issue, is to make it clear in the policy or procedure or both that any board action that needs to be taken should be on the board action portion of the board agenda and not on the consent agenda. I think if we make that explicit, it would be more transparent and more people could be aware of the fact that this is an issue that potentially could come up again. And then finally, I would simply ask, based on what I've reviewed, and I understand the decision is final, but would ask Superintendent Bakel to at least consider reconsidering his decision on this issue.
Order, please. Thank you. Board member, I'm sorry, no comments from the audience. Board members, any other comments? Director Cook.
Director McLaughlin, I really appreciate your comments. And I I think as a as a board, that's part of our governance role is to really carefully consider the implications of policies that we approve. And I I I think this particular policy is one that that we ought to pay some attention to in the context of these outcomes. But I, like you, I certainly don't dispute that that policy hasn't been carefully considered already by this board, is now effective, and has been followed in this instance.
Director Mervin.
I'm really torn about this one. Generally speaking, I think it's dangerous to start removing books or banning them. You know, it's difficult for for one group of people. People can absolutely decide what their own children can can read and be exposed to, but I have a real problem with them making that decision for everybody's children. That said, the rationale that the superintendent used for this book was not that it was about an LGBTQ parade. There's another book about an LGBTQ parade with the same title, The Rainbow Parade, same artist, different author. And I I think that our kids need to have books in their buildings, have easy access to books in their buildings that reflect who they are, how they live, what they believe. I think that's healthy. The issue with this one was not the LGBTQ thing, but it was and as Director McLaughlin said, it was kind of cartoon-like pictures. I mean, it wasn't graphic, but there were a couple of them that showed nudity. You had to look hard sort of to see what that was about, but it it was nudity. I didn't find it offensive, but it was there. And I I think it was sort of gratuitous, that the message about celebrating who one is, celebrating that community would have been equally powerful without those depictions. The other book, as far as I know, The Rainbow Parade, again, by a different author, didn't have any nudity. And so that was tough. And I guess the last thing is that if this were a really excellent work of literature, if it were The Grapes of Wrath, or something by Toni Morrison, or by Louise Erdrich, I would say absolutely it's there is going to be tough material there. But these are important seminal works that we need to keep and make sure that our kids have access to them. This was a cute book, but with the plethora of other books about gay rights and celebrating LGBTQ, I'm not sure that this one is in particular is meaningful enough that we have to really, really fight for it. There is.
Sorry, no comments from the audience. Order, please. Order, please. There are no comments from the audience, ma'am. Ma'am, there are no comments. Ma'am, there are no comments from the audience.
And what I was going to say is that my concern is that it could be precedent-setting. So thanks.
There are no comments from the audience. If you if you continue to comment, you'll be removed from the boardroom. Ma'am, if you continue to comment, you'll be removed from the boardroom. Board members, are there any other comments? Are there any other comments, board members? Director Barlow. Director Barlow.
Yes, I just wanted to, first of all, thank the those who have written to the school board to express and share their viewpoints and thoughts. I was able to learn some things I was not previously aware of. And as I read through the letter that the superintendent is sending to the Minnesota Department of Education, I also realized that this was not, if you will, his opinion, but a decision based on a legal counsel that he sought that provided this specific direction. And so I further understand that that while some of us may not fully agree or process completely where people may be, I do fully recognize the value of everyone having a a place. And my final point regarding place is this. I, to this day, continue to believe that it is the role of parents to inform, set the foundation for identity, purpose, value, sense, and self. I didn't send my kids to the public schools to have them obtain that from the schools. Had that occurred, they'd have no sense of who they what they could be. And and so I encourage families, organizations to avail yourself to to do what public schools can't necessarily do. Public schools cannot do everything that everyone wants public schools to do. And just based on the 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 content of the letter, I I could agree with Director McLaughlin. Would I have preferred to have had an opportunity to consider this outside the consent agenda, probably so. And that's why she referenced maybe adjusting our policy that allows that to occur, would be in full support of that. I know we will in a moment vote on this item that's been pulled off. But thank you for your willingness, Director McLaughlin, to to call it out. And I think, as Director Whitehorn suggested, allow us to learn to work together and collaborate toward what we believe to be what is best for Rochester Public Schools.
Director, Superintendent.
Thank you. I I think it's only appropriate that I add a few comments here. And I appreciate I appreciate board members raising all of these concerns, including the people who've emailed on both sides of this issue. This is a very, very difficult personal and professional decision. Professionally, because I believe in our media centers, that's one reason why I proposed and this board approved, including media specialists, which many districts long ago, I think, in a very short-sighted action, cut for financial reasons, be included in our referendum. And I learned from and spent a lot of time with our media specialists, and they landed in a different place. It's personally difficult because, as I mentioned in my memo to you, I grew up the son of a gay father when being gay was something you kept hidden. And in fact, we kept it hidden from my younger sister. There was so much shame. I'm pleased to say eventually he married his husband, and they were together for 20 years before he passed away. But I am unequivocally supportive, and there will be no slippery slope of backtracking on support for books that celebrate the lived experience of LGBTQ students and families. Since I've been in this district, we have started and supported an LGBTQ employee resource group. We have started student resource groups. We have been the leader in the state of Minnesota on transgender procedures and support. In other areas of equity, it was our district that was last week subject to a complaint to the U.S. Department of Education for our support of racial equity and growing staff of color and supporting staff of color who are currently in our system. And so I want to be completely clear that this book is about the depiction of nudity. And for people who are not clear what this nudity is, it is the depiction of what is appeared to be female breasts in the front and a female backside. And with all respect, Director McLaughlin, while I take your point about that maybe in this depiction of a pride parade, it was someone who was transgender, we're talking about first graders and kindergartners here. It looks like a female body. Were someone in this boardroom right now to take their clothes off and depict themselves like in that book, at minimum, the chair would recess the meeting. And I think we all know that if the person refused to put their clothes on, we'd probably adjourn the meeting, and that ultimately, the police could be called because with respect, Director McLaughlin, it does remain illegal in our state at present. Though you're correct that that is like our Title IX work on transgender issues, subject to court decisions, and we will obey those court decisions. This is not primarily, though, an issue of legal compliance. It's one about developmental appropriateness. We are talking about five-year-olds and six-year-olds and seven-year-olds. And this is not hypothetical. It was a first grader who brought the book home. And these are situations in which, for a first grader to understand when public nudity is and is not appropriate, is something that requires explanation and discussion. But the issue is, and I spent a lot of time with our media specialists on this, kids who are required, and I want them to be required, to go to our libraries, our media centers, they pull books unsupervised. And so they pull the book themselves, and they should. And so while I appreciate it that in Ms. Van Moore's book, she said, "Some books are not for everyone," you have to actually say the converse. Some books are not for certain students, but when they're on the open shelf of a media center, there's no one not only there to say, "That's a good fit for you," or it's not, there's no one there to read it with the kid. There's no one there to help them process it, to make sense of it, to answer their questions. That's what happens in our classrooms. That's not what happens with self-guided reading in our media centers. And so for me, the developmental appropriateness is can the student understand and access the material with in the in the realistic setting in which they will encounter it? And this realistic setting was a student alone, without guidance, in a media center, without someone to talk it through with. And so it is deeply related to the specific content around the physical depiction of nudity and the setting in which that was happening. What did not come to me was, could a teacher read this book in a setting where they could be discussing it with kids? That was not at hand. What did not come to me was, would this book be appropriate for middle school or high school students? That was not at hand. It was the specific question of open access in a media center where students encounter it without direction or guidance. Again, the most important reason I wanted to jump in is you can passionately disagree with this, but I have abs not only would I have no intention, I would consider it deeply problematic, were this a slippery slope in the way that I understand people may be concerned about, whether it applies to books in general, but in particular regarding LGBTQ issues here. And I wanted to be unequivocal, this is not any hesitance on my part that we need to celebrate and affirm those students and their families who were privileged to educate.
Ma'am, we're going to have to have you removed from the room if you continue to comment out loud. So I'm going to make some comments. I think, ma'am, I think that the the question that I have on this issue, and I support, as the superintendent has stated, the materials, the resources, the programs, the organizations that the district has done to support the LGBTQ community. Are there other resources currently available in our libraries on the same subject of the book? And I guess before I ask that question, I just want to make clear that my understanding is that the challenge to the book was not a challenge on the LGBTQ content or the parade content. It was specifically the nudity in the book.
I I think, as Director McLaughlin very perceptibly pointed out, this happened before the board updated its policy. And and so, like happens in life, this happened and we had to respond. We are going to be in a much better place the next times this happened because this policy is there, perhaps including some revisions like what you've suggested tonight. And so the process was not as clearly in place as it would be going forward. And so I am not, right now, privy to the specific concerns beyond an objection to the content. I very carefully, the thing, too, that's important to understand is, this book is like Where's Waldo. It's intended to be guiding the kids through discovering many things in the pictures. And it's brilliant because of that. And so the whole point is, look what I found in the book, which is great. If you've read read these kind of books with little kids, it's why it's such an effective reading technique. There are other things in that book that people might object to. There are two guys in leather. I did not include that in my memo. That is a fashion choice, not a question of something that is a misdemeanor. There is a silence equals death sign that hearkens back to the early days of AIDS activism. And the former high school social studies teacher in me was thinking, God, would kids know the history of what those activists did to change our government policies around HIV and AIDS? That also would be neat explanation, but that was not a matter of concern either. And certainly, the depiction of a a child going to a pride parade with their parents was not only of no concern to me, it was very positive. It was simply looking at the depiction of nudity in the book. And yes, you can say that's prudish and purient, but as the leader of a public school district that serves an extraordinary diversity of families, my job is to both look at what is developmentally appropriate for kids at different points in their development, which I do have expertise and a doctorate in, actually. While I respect media specialist expertise, I bring both academic and professional expertise to that discussion as well. And to a lesser extent, the fact that it remains illegal in Minnesota. Some of us might think that should change. That may change. That's still the law.
And what about resources that are available in our libraries on the topic?
Absolutely. In fact, in the Franklin Library, Tamara Van Moore is a superb media specialist. She has other resources in that library. I encourage her and our other media specialists to continue expanding resources that depict LGBTQ families and students in positive terms. I know they exist now. I haven't looked at them all, and I certainly would support the expansion of those kinds of materials.
And I know that in a lot of the communications that we've had, the phrase was used that, you know, not all books are for all students. But there are members of our community who would find The Rainbow Parade book a good resource for their own family situation, or they do want to educate their child using this resource. We already own the book. You've asked for it to be removed from the open shelves. What are the other options for that resource to be available, should it be requested by parent guardians or teachers?
When I recently went out recently went out and met with Tammy and Principal Sam Pearson at Franklin, we were not at the point of being able to think about that. She feels this is she would make a different decision if she was in my shoes. We agreed that she was going to write her statement, which is superbly done. I was going to write mine, make the decision. The board will make a decision about transmitting that. I think the decision does I certainly did not order disposal of the book or anything of that sort. I would personally be supportive of that. I will say that as she talked me through, and this happened in our meeting this summer with media specialists, running a media center with a bunch of little kids in it is a complex task. There is not, to my understanding, a clear process right now through which we have controlled access to materials, which is is not easy to do and potentially problematic. You don't want like the banned books section in the elementary media, you know, center. So we couldn't quite find that. But I would cer I think it's I said in my memo, I would have no concerns reading this book to my own kids. And I see why it's been highly reviewed. I would be very supportive of alternative ways to do it that are not that five- or six-year-old finding the book alone, you know, independently in a media you know, independently in a media center with no adult guidance or explanation. But in our discussions to date, we really were focused on the difficult decision, which as I know you know, Madam Chair, I've struggled with a lot, that we are faced with now. I would welcome the chance, and I would certainly probably be turning to our Chief Academic Officer Mona Perkins and her team to work with media specialists to see, is there some other way that we can make resources available? But I understand that that's not a simple thing to consider. I've learned that, actually, in talking with our media specialists.
Board members, any other comments before we move to the actual resolution? So a reminder, the resolution reads, "Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the superintendent to submit a report on the challenge to the book, The Rainbow Parade, and the superintendent's decision to remove the book from the shelves of elementary school media centers and RPS to the Minnesota Department of Education." Before, I ask for a motion and second. Director Marvin asked that I modify the resolution to say, to submit a report on the challenge to the book, The Rainbow Parade, by Emily Nielsen, to make clear that it is that book because there are other books of that title.
Called The Rainbow Parade, right?
Yes. So do we have--
For elementary kids.
Right. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Director Marvin.
Just to clarify, and Dr. Pecal, I appreciate your comment that this book is not being banned. I think that, in almost all instances, is really dangerous. I think it's available at the public library. I think it's smart for us to determine a way that parents can have easy access to this book if they so, and other books if they so choose for their children. But I think at this point, just removing it from elementary schools and perhaps replacing it with the other, The Rainbow Parade book by, what's his name, Shane Jordan, would make sense. So I would be in favor of that.
Director Whitehorne?
Just for my own clarification, so I understand. So this is to remove the book just from the elementary schools. So this book could still be in the middle schools or so forth. We're just saying that the, due to the depiction of the pictures in the book, that we just don't want a five-year-old pulling it off the shelf. But it will still be available through the district, and it could possibly still be available in the middle school or other, is that what we're saying, or we?
Superintendent?
Yeah, Director Whitehorne, thank you for that question. I was very deliberate in the language that I used, which is the open shelves of an elementary media center. And I intentionally did not say any other, either level of school. It's a book for little kids, so I don't know how much middle school or high school kids, but maybe. And I also did not say other settings in an elementary school in which there could be guidance and support for what's there, or someone knows that a particular parent has said, "I don't want my kid to encounter something." Now, we have, we don't have a policy of saying parents can opt out of everything. We do have a very clear policy that says parents can request that their children be exempted from certain content they consider controversial. And so we would adhere to existing policies. What I learned about the way our media centers work is until the kid brings the book up to check it out, that's the moment when the, whether it's the education support professional or the media specialist, that's when they scan the book. And that's when they would see that a parent has raised a concern, but not when the kid picks it up. So yes, it's a long-winded way of saying. It's very limited to, it's not on the open shelves. Other possibilities, I would certainly be very open to, and I frankly would expect to leave that to our professionals. I feel my job is to respond to this complaint that came from a parent and do what we've done. And then I would trust them to find good solutions that adhere to this direction, but that also make great resources available to our kids.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Resolution passes. The next item on our agenda is item 7.1, focus topic, redefining RPS key initiative. This is an information item, Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I want to invite Amy Icke, who's our Executive Director of Community Education and Partnerships, and I believe Momsu Knutson, who is our Director of Communications, just stepped out, but she is returning now. Yes, you. As Chair Nathan mentioned, when the school board reviewed our mission statement, we have not revisited that mission statement for a fairly extended period of time. It sits on the back wall there, and many of us look up at it. When I got to Rochester in 2021 and we launched the strategic plan that Director Nathan described a few moments ago, we considered doing this then. And we ultimately decided not to do it because frankly, we needed to get into the nuts and bolts of our district initiative, into our new work on reading, into our new work on post-secondary and career readiness. And yet, that work is important. And deciding who we are as an organization in terms of our mission, our vision, and our values is not just fluff. It really influences how people think and behave in an organization. And ultimately, it influences how we express ourselves to the world. And so tonight, we are kicking off with Amy and Momsu's leadership, the updating of that mission, that vision, those values, and ultimately, I think, a new logo and a new brand and a new way of presenting ourselves to the world that is reflective of the diversity and dynamism that's happening in RPS today. So thank you, Amy and Momsu, and we'll turn it over to you.
All right. Momsu is going to kick it off with some discussion of the communications theory behind this key initiative. I'll share an example with you of one that I love, and then we'll talk about what the work is involved in this key initiative. And then really, we'd love to have a conversation with you about what are the things that are on your mind that we should consider as we undertake this key initiative.
Hello, everyone. So the key initiative is one of Superintendent Pecal's key initiatives that we're working on. It's defining RPS. So our charge is to develop a new mission, vision, and values for RPS and a new brand identity, including but not limited to a new tagline and logo that encapsulates the new RPS mission, vision, and values. And something that we're working off of this, we started this fall with initiative called Celebrate RPS, with the mindset that people won't change the way they talk about us until we change the way we talk about us. And that's a quote from Dr. Sanfilippo. But that Celebrate RPS thing is we're trying to get the community involved in sharing the good news. Because we, as a communications department, we're here in Edison, sometimes we're out at schools, out in the community, but the people are in the schools and the people are out in the community, and they're seeing the good work that's being done by staff and students. So we're recommending they share those with us. Why this work is important? It helps us build a clear and consistent brand. A clear and consistent brand helps families and staff understand our impact on individuals and the community. It develops trust in our ability to deliver on our promises, and it helps differentiate us among choices in other school districts, as well as increase pride and motivation for people to be a part of RPS. It also supports other critical work in the district. So another key initiative that this work will partner with is the enrollment strategy that I believe John is leading. It also helps build on the building blocks of the strategic plan that's posted in the back of the boardroom and throughout the website, throughout the district, et cetera. And it also helps in, we are coming to the end of the first strategic plan that Superintendent Pecal created, and we're starting to develop the next set of it. So it'll help tie into that, bring together the vision, the mission, what the community says RPS is, and moving into the future.
And I think Lori's going to help me. One of my favorite examples of an effective mission package, if you will, is how the University of Minnesota Rochester talks about the work that they do. And just to give you an idea of how these pieces work together, I'm going to try and use this mouse to scroll. We'll see if I can. Nope, not quite. Well, they begin with their vision statement. Can you go up just a little bit? A little bit more. Other way, sorry. There we go. So they talk about their vision as what I would say their purpose of really being transformative in the higher ed world as one piece of it, and then how they're going to go about that. So they really talk about what drives everything that they do. Right now, we'll talk a little bit about why this work is important now in a minute. But as, if you're ever in an audience where you hear Chancellor Carol talk about the university, she refers to this and then tells you about the exciting work that's happening at the U. You can tell there's a very clear connection with that description of why they're doing what they're doing and what they're attempting to do with those examples that she gives. So next, they go into, stay there and just scroll down, sorry. I nodded and I should have used words. If you go down to the grounding values, yep, thank you. And then if you can get as far as the list of those. So what they do is they talk about the values on which they make decisions. That's good, right there, Lori. So this talks about how the people in the organization really act on, what they agree on about the way that they're going to do their work, and what's important. How do we identify? And this is something that I believe has maybe been missing in our previous work with our mission statement. We had a mission. We had our why and our what, but we never really got this far in terms of what we publicly communicated. It may have been in the original strategic plan work that occurred 12 years ago. That was right before I came, so I know some of you can speak to that. I wasn't there. But I think there's value in pulling out these individual statements that clarify. The closest, I would say, that I refer to things now are equity statements that get at sort of what we value. This is even broader than that in terms of when we do the work in the district, what do we base that on? What's the philosophy behind it? What do we think is important? And then the last thing they do is look into the future. So they make some aspirational statements about where they're headed. And you can read these at your leisure. But if you catch that all into a package, it talks about the what and the why, says how we make decisions based on our values, and where we would really like to get to. Where are we headed? Why is this work important? That's what's exciting to me about this work ahead in this key initiative, is we can do some work within our walls, outside of our walls, about really what is the community believe is important for RPS and where are we headed? Thank you, Lori. We can go back to the slides. So why is this important today as opposed to any other time? I would just share that, as I said, the original work on the mission was done about 12 years ago. The mission is on that back wall. It's up above your heads back here as well, the Inspire Challenge Empower.
I want to note, I think someone said those kids have graduated, I think, from, well, for sure from RPS, some from college, too. So that's all that it is.
So absolutely no offense to any who had a hand in that, but it is falling a bit out of date in terms of where we are today. And I would just point out, in reflecting back and thinking about the beginning of this key initiative, we've had a significant amount of change in the last 12 years. I don't think any of you would disagree with that. And as I thought about it, it's worldwide, it's in Minnesota, it's right here in Rochester. And I listed a few that popped into my head that perhaps weren't even part of our vocabulary at that point, and certainly have changed both the makeup of our district and our state, as well as the, what we're focusing on today in the world. It's also the final year of our current strategic plan. And as we transition from a plan that began when Dr. Pecal accepted being interim superintendent and then became permanent superintendent, now to a plan where he is fully immersed, we have aligned our work under the current building blocks. This seems the ideal time for us to take a critical look at how we talk about ourselves, how we describe the work we do, and how we make decisions. So as we prepare for that next phase, we know we will be looking at the whole cadre of programs that the district offers. Do we have the right combination of programs? And some of that will be based on this work in terms of our vision, our mission, our values. So the work that's involved in this key initiative breaks down this way. We start with the voices. We identify, first of all, all the different voices we need to hear. And that is no small task. That means internal stakeholders, that means community voices, different life experiences, different identities. And we need all of that to come together and weave into the tapestry that is the district. We need to assess our capacity to do this full key initiative with the work that we have now, the personnel we have as well. We've begun some of this work. We did some capturing of baseline data so that as we get along in the project, we can measure against that. And then we'll be establishing a small group to lead this work. That small group will then lead this broad assessment, capturing those voices that we've identified, and really processing all of that information, that engagement, that consultation. We'll be sharing our learning outcomes back with you at several points along the way. I think we're on the A, B, C, D about six times maybe between now and June, so that we have an open dialogue on this process. And then, once we land on those key ideas, we'll be bringing the Momsu's department to the table to really create those tools for communicating all of that. We are at about the fourth bullet right now. And Momsu has put together a very thorough plan, and we are actually right now out with a, an RFP, a Request for Proposal, for some help. So as we looked over the capacity to be able to do some of the research and the engagement with the community, we felt we needed some additional help, both on the expertise side of the development of these pieces and also the labor to do the outreach. We're request, or anticipating requesting your approval in early February for a vendor to help us with some of this. We would conduct the research and engagement. You will absolutely be a part of that as board members, and you'll also be hearing about that out in the community and within the district as well. And again, we'll be developing those visuals. Our goal is to conclude this work by June 30. That is an aggressive goal. We recognize that. But what that would allow us to do is to prepare then, over the summer, to launch in the fall. And then that also launches with the beginning of the development of the next strategic plan as well. So we absolutely want to align this work with that existing strategic plan and with the development of the next. So at this point, we would love to hear from you on what are some of the issues you think we should consider as we delve into this work. This is early input into our project, but we'd love to hear your thoughts. Board members?
This is big. Director Marvin?
Well, I was one of those who was around a long time ago when we came up with that statement. I think, still think it's really relevant. However, sometimes those things get to be like that old lounger in your living room. Not that I have one. That, it's been there for so long, you just don't notice it anymore. And I think that's what you're talking about, is that we want to make sure that people are really aware of what our district is about and what we're doing that's different and better than what we did 15, 20 years ago. And I think this is a great opportunity to really engage the community in giving them a picture that they may not have yet of who we are and what we do, which is considerably different and advanced from what it was. So I think the main concern I have, and I see that you've addressed it here already, is making sure that community members really are engaged in this. I mean, that statement-- I mean, that statement took weeks or months, maybe. They were, they were, the committee was looking at which pronoun to use, which preposition to use, and really fine tuning it. And we're excited when they finally agreed that that was the one. And I think it is time to revisit what we're doing.
Director Workman.
Director Barlow and I had the opportunity to be on that original core planning team back in 2012, so this is sort of a trip back down memory lane, but I certainly support what Director Marvin had to say. One discussion that did take a lot of time, several hours maybe, was the first sentence, "Our mission is to inspire, challenge, and empower." And the question was word order. Some people, oh, we have to challenge them, but if they're not inspired, they're not going to be challenged. So I really like that piece of it. It doesn't have to be said that way, but to keep that concept in mind. And the preposition that you were talking about, or the, yes, was the letter A. That's not a preposition.
Just an article.
It's an article. It's an article, yes, thank you. And involved members of a global community as opposed to the global community. There was a lot of discussion of, I don't know if you remember that, but it was an interesting time. So I look forward to having this discussion now and agree that it's time we modernize it, make it relevant to what our students and we are experiencing in 2025 and beyond.
Director Barlow.
And to simply piggyback off of what Dr. Marvin and Director Workman have said already, my involvement was not as a member of the school board, but as a member of the community. So community involvement is important, and hopefully we'll be able to not necessarily mirror what was, but tap into what can be. And it seems like that will probably occur, and I'm looking forward to additional input opportunities. You said perhaps six between now and, looking forward to.
Five or six. Director Whitehorn.
So I guess I have a little bit of a concern. So we, I know we're talking very broadly about community involvement. As, before I was sworn in a little bit ago here, I was just a regular community member. What I will say is that I appreciate that we want to involve the community, but my concern is how are we not just meeting with the same 17 people, right? Because when we say we're reaching out to the commu, community and we have these deadlines, what I personally feel often happens is we have the same groups of people, the same 30 people that show up to everything and come through everything, so we're not really getting a gauge of the actual community. Sometimes it has to do with accessibility, the timeframes, it's not that parents don't have something to say, but some of the communities that are directly impacted by some of the statements that we make are often not at the table. So my question is, how are we shifting that? Because it sounds really beautiful that we're going to involve the community, but I don't ever really see plans on outreach, on how we are actually going to involve the community. I know the common response is we send them email, but I get a lot of emails, and my box is I have 999 unread emails, and I know I'm not the only person. So how do we intend to make that engagement happen? I know we say we will send this out or do this, but if we're honest here, we're not seeing an increase of community engagement. We're not seeing new faces, you know? So how will we actually make this a community, you know, do you have a plan to actually make this a community initiative? Or is it just going to be a thing where we say, oh, these 12 people showed up, so this is the community that cared, and we'll just go with their opinion? Because I feel like that's often what happens when we set these hard objectives.
Straight to that, Madam Chair. The most successful experience that I've been involved with in Rochester that went beyond what you're worried about was when we worked on the 2020 census. And we worked with different communities in Rochester and actually hired community connectors, we called them. And these were people who were willing to connect the group that had the information with the county and the others that were working on the census. So they acted between groups out in the community and the kind of central committee that was working on things. So we would share information with the community connectors. We would ask them to reach out within the various communities, gather data, come back to us, give us feedback. And we got quite a bit more involvement within a variety of both ethnic communities, age communities, locations within Rochester, things like that, even within the homeless community, the teens, different groups like that. And that community connector model seemed to work very well. I think some of the key was to identify people who had connections within different groups that we were not attracting to, like the community meetings, things like that. And then to recognize that the time that they put in was valuable, it was real work, you know, and to compensate them and support them in that work. So I would love to use a process like that.
So I guess I would just say that maybe we could, this would be a great opportunity to consist, to work with some of the grassroots organizations that are already in our community. I got a little pet peeve with us saying we have to find people, because there are a lot of organizations that are already connected in these organizations, and I think this would be an amazing opportunity for RPS to create partnerships with some of these grassroots organizations that are already doing a lot of this work, as opposed to trying to find an additional person who is going to do nothing more than reach out to the pre-existing grassroots
I know that we talked a lot about the last process focusing on words, and obviously the product of this in every district that I've seen is words and phrases and paragraphs. Is there a way in this process, though, to ask the community, what would keep these words alive for you as we go forward? So, you know, we write them, we put them on a piece of paper, we put them on a website, we hope people reference them. I think we do internally, because I think it's going, we know it's going to be the foundation for what we go forward to with the strategic plan, and then we build on that with the concepts. But I always wonder about connecting to the community to keep, I remember with the last mission, there, because they're still in the workroom, the posters that we printed and that we put posters up in every building and we sent it to every classroom and we, you know, did pictures, the magnets, who still has a magnet?
Yeah.
So we were, we were trying to disseminate it and put it everywhere, but that didn't necessarily keep it alive. It was still just, you know, words. So I don't know if there's anything that either our consultant can help us with or best practices, where we find out from people, how do we make this meaningful when this process is over to the community so it doesn't just end up being a webpage?
I think your point and Director Whitehorn's points are really great ones to challenge us on. I think, to your point, Director Nathan, that's, the board's job at the policy level and my job at the ministry level is to make it happen, not to just put it on the wall and, you know, put it to bed. I appreciated that you mentioned you went to the graduation of our CAPE program at Overland. That grew out of our last strategic plan with our community saying, we have a group of parents who need more support to understand how to help their kids succeed academically. It came authentically out of that feedback three years ago, but then we actually made it happen. Like, we actually have, like, that's execution. We all have lived these plans that can develop or put on the wall, and then it just doesn't happen. So I think part of that is, that's on us. I think too, and this is partly prompted by Director Whitehorn's statements, you're right, like, we can't just call the usual suspects. Like, if I called Jerome Ferson and Tawanda Burks again, like, they'll always answer, but we've got to go beyond. I think an important point, though, for us to remember is, three years ago, the community also includes people in our schools and programs, teachers, principals, and others. Three years ago, they were saying, we don't have a voice in the direction, in the strategic plan. They were saying, we are top-down and we are told again and again what the direction is. I think over the last three years, we are nowhere there, but we've made progress on that internal community piece. The external piece is absolutely the next frontier. And you're right, we have to get creative. I'll be honest, we have a particular challenge that I'm most concerned about, about reaching our families and community members who face the biggest challenges to educational success. We also have to get access to the power brokers and the movers and shakers that we don't necessarily have. I know that may seem counterintuitive, but as Mayo Clinic is putting $5 billion into this community, how do we really understand what that partnership can bring us? Because we don't necessarily have dialogue at the most senior levels of that organization either about the real, real issues. So I think that the point about as we embark on this, and this, this effort by design will lead into the next strategic plan. So the relationships we build around mission, vision, values will feed right into the what of the next plan. You know, what's the next CAPE program that we need? What's the, what's the things that we need to do? So I'm grateful for you getting us underway and lots of good, lots of good feedback.
Director Cook.
So the, I'm excited by this initiative. I love branding, I love these kind of activities. I think it's exciting and it's an opportunity to do some self-reflection and think about, you know, who we are, who we want to be when we grow up, that kind of stuff. The perspective I wanted to share here, though, is that for the overwhelming, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure, for the overwhelming number of parents in our community, RPS as an entity is like a place to be annoyed with or to complain to. The, what they are interested in and what they think of in terms of our schools are the schools that their kids attend and that they have a personal connection to and an experience with. Where the RPS brand identity gets the most mileage is with people that don't have kids in our school. It's the broader community, people who are, you know, past the age where their kids are attending school but still see that item on their property tax statement. It's the business owners that are thinking about their ability to hire seasonal workers or, you know, summer, summer students or something. And like, those are the parts of our community that we, I think we, it's, it's in our interest, it's in their interest to have a brand identity that reflects the value that they, that they aspire to for RPS or that they hope they will receive from RPS and the value that RPS brings to our community generally. So that's the, that was my thought on this, but I'm looking forward to more updates and more opportunities for input.
Any else? Board members? As you mentioned, we will have multiple chances to, and I think what I heard from Director Whitehorn and from the superintendent as well is, I'm assuming that as part of the information you're going to be providing is that, that the details on the tasks and how that outreach is going to happen, et cetera, et cetera. All right. Thank you.
Our next item is 8.1, an action item, approval of school board meeting dates for 2025. But before I read the resolution, this action item is to approve the dates for our school board meetings for the remainder of this year. The requirements for setting the dates and notice of school board meetings are available in the agenda item on Symbli, as are the school board meeting dates for 2025. As for our meeting dates, we have two regular meetings per month except for March, July, and November because those are months with restricted dates and vacations. We have five study sessions strategically scheduled for 2025, which is down from 10 in 2024. All meetings will start at 5:30 with the following exceptions. On August 5th, National Night Out, so our meeting will be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And on December 16th, it will be our Truth in Taxation meeting, which begins at 6:00 p.m. by statute. Any other comments on our meeting dates before we, Director Marvin?
Quick comment. Our understanding is that in the event that we need to schedule an additional study session or an additional meeting, this schedule that we're about to approve would not prohibit us from doing that.
No. And we would have to give our statutory notice
Right.
of a special meeting, yes. And one other note is, since the December 10th study session, the decision was made to remove the February 4th special session and regular meeting, and the A, B, C, D, and this list of dates has been updated to reflect that. So be it resolved that the School District of ISD 535 approved the dates, times, and locations for school board meetings for 2025.
Move approval.
Seconded. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, the resolution has been approved.
Board members, it is 7:13, and we are about to embark on our next agenda item, which is approval of the balanced budget model. Would anybody like to take a 10-minute recess before we dive in? I see, was somebody like to make a motion to recess?
So moved.
Seconded?
Second.
We are in recess at 7:13 p.m. We are in recess at 7:13 p.m. The school board's back in session at 7:26 p.m. Our next agenda item is 8.2, approval of balanced budget model. This is an action item, but prior to me reading the resolution, I believe we have a presentation, Superintendent McHale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I am going to move quite quickly. And you have the PowerPoint that's up there. It's also on our Symbly website. There are a few substantive changes since our last update to the board, but mostly, this is before you open the discussion and take a vote, a review of where we've been over almost a year of work and many meetings of this board. As you know, this is one of the building blocks that Director Nathan talked about at the beginning of our meeting tonight, down there in the corner. We called it modify funding formulas, which evolved into rethinking funding, which eventually has become the balanced budget model that's before you tonight. And what came out of one of those community working groups that we had in the strategic plan, which we called our Economic Engine Group, was two big ideas. One, we really need to be willing to allocate our resources, which in any educational institution are people and time, more than other operating funds, to meet the needs of our students as they exist today. And we need to put the school district on a solid financial footing. And that's why this board cut $21 million in the first two years I was here, more than 156 positions. It's why you asked the referendum, the community to stand up with the referendum and renewed the existing operating referendum. And it's why we're here tonight to talk about allocating our resources in ways that meet our student needs. In a nutshell, it's saying that if we are not willing to reallocate resources, we're going to continue to get the same outcomes that we've always gotten. So it was in the strategic plan and it was by design in the third wave of our strategic plan because we wanted the academic agenda to come first. And so laying the groundwork with our science of reading strategy, our post-secondary pathway strategy, investing in our principals as leaders and all those other building blocks got underway first because we wanted to make sure that that was the horse that was pulling the wagon as opposed to the other way around. And then in March of last year, we launched this intensive process that brings us here tonight. Very importantly, there are still many details to be worked out in this process. If you vote to approve the balanced budget model tonight, you are voting to approve a model, not the actual budget. And we will spend the next six months refining that budget, meeting with every school to look at updated enrollment projections, seeing what comes out of the 2025 legislative session, looking at our union contracts, if there are any that settle, although there's none scheduled to before June, looking at the utilities costs that we will see for next year. So the devil is always in the details here. We have provided you with a lot of data, though, because I don't think you can vote for this model without seeing projections. That said, our projections in January will be much improved by June. As I look at this really ambitious set of milestones that we've crossed over the last month, I have to thank in particular our core team that's done this work, Andy Krogstad and Denise Moody, John Carlson, Gretchen Acasio, Peter Christoferson. I have pushed them very hard, including interrupting a lot of Vikings games on Sundays, which is painful for me too and not just people I was texting. And so this is an important moment. Board members have gotten to know this graphic that was prepared by our technical assistance partner, Afton Partners, pretty well. The star there is where they ranked our current, what they call, decision rights. Who decides how the money is spent? Who decides how the staffing is allocated? Our internal team allocates that, not on a scientific scale, the proposed balanced budget model would move us to where that blue star is. I will say, as some of you may be aware as board members, I was initially conceptualizing moving much further to the left. And I believe that the guidance in particular from this board, but also from people in our buildings, has convinced me that we want somewhat more flexibility, but not excessively more flexibility. And so we've moved in this proposal to more flexibility at the school level, but very much in a bounded way, not in a way that would move us all the way toward what you see Afton called highly autonomous, in which essentially schools are almost charter schools operating without district oversight. Very importantly, next week at your study session, we will give you an overview of the 2.0 version of our school improvement process, which also provides more flexibility for decision-making at the school level with school improvement teams that will be informing the budgets that principals prepare. And that ultimately, of course, as those gears suggest, this is about student learning for all of our kids. The connection between the budget and the skip plan is one that seems obvious. Your improvement plan should guide your budget. In my 30-plus years working in the field, I will say that is rarely achieved in education. That very often we roll over the budget, cutting it or increasing it as we get more or less money, and we don't really reallocate strategies to adapt to our educational mission. That's what we're after here. We won't have that figured out by this year, the end of this year or next year. That will certainly be a multi-year journey. I think this model lays the groundwork for it. As a board, you voted to approve the guiding principles of this redesign, that we would be having a funding and staffing model that's effective, efficient, equitable, coherent, predictable, transparent, and responsive. And as we tried to put in short statements there on the slide, we believe that we have not fully, but sufficiently achieved those principles and that we certainly, should you approve this model, would keep them in mind as we build it out. And I'm sure we'd revisit it with you in June. So this is the key model where we've landed. And this is probably where most of the change has occurred in recent weeks. We begin with our fixed school staffing component of the budget, which would work a lot like our current process does today, which, as the five clean audits that this board has received from our external auditors in a row show, is well-managed and pretty formulaic. It also doesn't provide much flexibility at the school level. So we would continue to allocate those positions. We'd allocate them using average salaries. And principals would not be able to change those, the class size targets that are set, the total, what we call, teaching load of 160 students per, at the secondary level. That's about where 80% of the funds would lie. And so the majority is still being allocated in that way that guarantees a common educational program across the district. But then there's that flexible school funding. And the word there is important. We're allocating funding in that category even though the salaries are still set at the average salary, so we don't create a perverse incentive to hire less experienced people because they're cheaper. But that's where the flexible resources would come in. We would still use transparent formulas, which we'll touch on in a moment, to allocate those dollars to schools. But that's where our principals would have flexibility based on the approved school improvement plans that their skip teams put together. Very importantly, and this is a point I don't think we've adequately made in our previous presentations, those dollars would have to significantly, not only, but significantly serve our students who either live in poverty or face other barriers to learning. That's in part because I think it's in keeping with this district's equity commitments, but it's also because that's where some of the funds that we're using to pay for that money come from. That's the intent of federal Title I funding. That's the intent of state compensatory funding from the state of Minnesota. So schools could use some of those dollars for students who are more advantaged. It would not only be for students who are facing additional challenges, but certainly the majority of those dollars. The average of 20%, as you saw in the long memo that I sent you, is an average. And it goes down to about 15%, 16% at the low end and up to just under 40%, depending on the demographics of our schools. Then we get to our specialized programs category, and we would continue to budget that process similar to the way we do today. And then finally, what we are now calling district-wide services. As you may remember, we previously called that central office. And I realized that that is a terrible name because everyone's mind will go to this building. And this building is in there, but this building is nowhere near the majority of expense that would be in that category. It will also include, as I'll show you in a moment, things like our transportation and custodial and other services to schools that are managed outside schools. A very important shift that I'll also highlight in a moment from the last version you saw of this model, is that we would build that district-wide services budget in this model, if you approve it, around what we're calling cost centers, as opposed to the organizational chart. At present, our central office budgets are largely determined by the offices that exist in our district. And in fact, some of them use names from offices that no longer exist, but they existed in previous years. And I was in a meeting with the finance team as they were trying to remember the archaeology of some of the budget codes that went back to offices that no longer exist in RPS. In short, we organize the budgets outside schools by the offices that exist within the central office. What I think is a better process for the long term is to create cost centers that are organized by function, not who reports to where, not whose budget is it as a person, what function is it? So then, if future superintendents or me or future boards direct changes in the org chart, the cost center structure still exists to fund the function. So this may seem like not a big change, but I think once we get it built out, it's going to be a quantum leap in our ability to have really serious strategic discussions of how we spend our money that is not in schools, that is centrally. So I'll show you an example of that in just a second. Here are some examples of the positions that would be in that category one of fixed school funding, critical positions that are providing our core educational program that also are part of our referendum commitments, as I'll talk about at the end. That is not something that they would be able to shift at the building level. Then we have our flexible school funding examples. And the core idea is that those are positions and budgets that are support for learning as opposed to the core program itself. And as we've said a number of times as I presented on this model, I think it's really important not to look at those bullets that are up there and necessarily think schools will choose to disinvest in those positions. I think there's a great likelihood that they will increase investments in many of those positions as we give them the flexibility to make those decisions. For instance, taking a position that right now is part-time in your school, like a .3 equity specialist or reading specialist, and upping the funding so you can have someone there for a 1.0, a full-time equivalent. I have literally met one person in my three and a half years here who likes being a traveling staff member across schools. And otherwise, people would like to be housed and fully working in one school. That requires choices when the budgets are tight. Would you rather have part of someone part of the week or someone full-time in a position? So that's our category two. Category three are our specialized programs. You can see there, very importantly, those are essentially those valuable programs that are not schools and they're not that are not schools and they're not central office, but they're incredibly valuable parts. We would continue to fund those largely as we do, bringing the board a recommendation every year for funding levels. And then finally, there is our starting list of those cost centers. And it loosely ties to the org chart that exists now. But to give you an example, when we talk about the Office of Academics, that's right now how we budget our work on advanced learning. It's subsumed in an office. Well, that actually is a separate distinct function, the support we give to our advanced learners. And so we would build a cost center that is advanced learning, and that's how we would budget that function going forward. You can see an array of those others that are there. One that I also want to call out, because I know board members have gotten emails about this over the years. We lack a funding source for playground upgrades in our elementary schools. And there's a longstanding tradition of asking PTAs to raise those dollars. And I believe that's both inefficient and not equitable. And so we would resource that as a cost center and at minimum have a 17-year cycle of saying which schools get playground upgrades on that cycle. And if a PTA or the school or a donor wanted to go beyond it, that might be something we'd consider, but it's our job to fund that. Playgrounds are not peripheral resources for elementary schools. So I wanted to highlight that since that was not there. We actually have done a needs assessment. So if you approve this, we could tell you which schools are first because of the conditions of their playgrounds. This is the breakdown, which you've seen before. There's no significant change in this from your previous reviews of this, so I won't go into it into detail. But our general fund would have a flexible pot of money that comes from the difference between all of our expenses and the revenues that we would have available. It would be allocated by formula. Those formulas could be adjusted over time. They might be adjusted between now and when we bring you a budget in June if we find that we haven't gotten them right. But we've refined them significantly over the last three months to be sure that we'd be resourcing schools sufficiently. Then we've got our compensatory education revenue. The big change there is we currently allocate 80% to schools and we would allocate 100% in the interest of increasing that flexibility for them. Another major change is we currently concentrate our Title I funding from the federal government in a limited number of elementary schools. And then some schools, like the Alternative Learning Center, that have free and reduced-price lunch rates more than 75% when federal law then requires you to fund them. We would increase the number of our schools that get that Title I funding. That does have a consequence for schools that now get a lot of that Title I funding. In Minnesota, unlike other states, a school with a lot of low-income kids gets compensatory education funding, which is multiplied when there are more low-income kids in the school. And so concentrating our Title I funding in the same schools as have significant amounts of compensatory has really maximized our resources in a very limited number of schools. But those students are still with us in middle school. They're still with us in high school. And so we would expand the use of those dollars at the secondary level. Our achievement and integration funding from the state of Minnesota would have a portion that would be taken off the top to fund our MTSS work in literacy, our post-secondary pathways work, and our efforts to recruit more diverse staff to the school district. And then 2.8 million would be allocated out to sites. As I'll talk about in a moment, just to be sure we're clear about this, our PTEC, CTEC, and PSEO funding strategy would no longer hold schools, high schools harmless for when students are not taking class in the high school, but they are at PSEO, PTEC, or CTEC, and would reallocate those dollars. That's how the program was, has always been intended to work in Minnesota. But we have essentially double-dipped in Rochester, where we have funded the high school as though the kid was in class there and funded PTEC, CTEC, or PSEO as though they are there, which is where they were. And then we would reallocate our staff development funding to have 30% off the top to support the work that Mona and her team and others do at the system level and 70% out to schools for their work. So a few big issues as we've been in the home stretch of developing this model that I want to touch on. First, very critical, what about the 2024 referendum? I consider it not only frankly a moral imperative to meet the commitments of the referendum, but frankly a political one. The community voted for this, and we need to demonstrate that we're sticking to what we said we're going to do. And so in the balanced budget model, all the positions and programs that were in the referendum proposal would be funded at the level we said they'd be funded, and that's outlined in your memo. No schools would be closed. None of the class-sized targets would be changed. We would not increase the teacher load level. That would require negotiations with Rochester Education Association, which we're not proposing. And no major cuts in positions or programs. So touching base on PSEO here, I really summarized it succinctly, or fairly succinctly, a moment ago, so I won't read you the bullet points. But the critical point here is that were our participation in post-secondary options classes, mostly at Rochester Community and Technical College for our district, or PSEO and CTEC, very small, we could probably continue doing what we've been doing. But at the level that it has expanded to right now, it's simply not sustainable to fund the high schools and fund those other programs that are serving those students. I will say, I met with staff at Mayo High School this morning, and we had a great discussion, and the issue of PSEO, CTEC, and PTEC came up. And one of the things they urged was, we know we want kids participating in that kind of rigorous coursework. We need to take a look at making sure that what they're doing is educationally the best, most valuable work for them. And so I think that's going to be a theme of our next strategic plan. Got a lot of kids taking those classes because they perceive a financial incentive of earning college credit. But not all of them are passing those classes, and some of those classes might not serve them as well as what we're teaching in our high schools. But we also need to be very cautious about reaching that conclusion because we want more of our kids, especially more of our kids that are underrepresented in higher education, taking those college-earning credits. We need to do some homework to make sure they're taking them, that are putting them on the path to their plans after high school. And then a really important point that came, I know, up as people started to look at the budget projections by school in this memo. There's an increased transparency this year on this issue because we're asking you to adopt a new budget model. But in fact, schools see swings in funding every year based on enrollment and based on changes in their demographics. This year, because we're asking you to vote on this new budget model and we're presenting it as a column where you can see the current funding and the change, it's much more explicit. But it's important to say, this is actually something we navigate and support schools through every year. There are three primary reasons that seven schools are seeing declines. And those declines range from quite small, $25,000, to quite significant, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars in a number of instances. And then one outlier that I'll talk about in a second. The three main reasons for that are overall enrollment decline. And as we've talked about in this, at these board meetings before, we are entering a gigantic transformation in American public education because the senior class of 2025 is the biggest class that is going to exist for the foreseeable future in terms of size. It's all downhill from here. The birth rate is, since 2008 in the United States, has gone down by 17%. The pie has shrunk. And that's not at all just a Rochester phenomenon. In fact, there's a lot of reason to believe, as we've also talked about, that as the Mayo Clinic Investment Destination Medical Center actually generates new employment here, we'll be an exception to that trend in the medium and longer term. But when schools and districts don't reallocate dollars to reflect changes in enrollment, it seems to postpone the pain of change, but it can set you up to be unviable in the long term. We need to allocate the dollars where the kids are. So the first reason some of these schools are seeing a decline is the decline in their overall enrollment. As I said at the outset, it's January. This is a projection. When we bring you the budget in June, we'll have firmer numbers. And then if something changes over the summer, if we got the projection wrong or new kids move into a community, we add or subtract staffing tied to the changing enrollment right up to and through the start of the school year. Compensatory revenue is the dollars the state of Minnesota allocates to serve. They're generated by kids who live in low-income families, and they can serve about 11, nine or 11 functions that are outlined in your memo. Those are allocated by formula. And so when the number of those kids in a school changes, we are legally bound to reallocate those dollars. So that is happening in this model because we have some swings that are happening in the demographics of our school. The Title I change is also driven by change in demographics. So if there's fewer low-income kids in a school, it will generate less Title I. But it also is impacted by the recommendation that I'm making to you that we shift our allowed federal funding strategy for Title I and fund more of our schools with that funding source. So you can see on the slide, there are six schools, Bamber Valley, Franklin Elementary, Gibbs Elementary, Longfellow Overland, and Minsync Online. And we've broken down in narrative form the reasons that they see a decrease. We will work closely with those principals over the next six months to look at their enrollment projections and work with them to plan for adjusting for those decreases. But in short, it's not the balanced budget model and the new flexible funding that is reducing their budgets. It's enrollment and changes in demographics, with the exception of the Title I shift, which I believe again is prudent because we were concentrating a lot of resources in a relatively limited number of schools in our previous title strategy. Now, this is one where I just have to say I wish we could have a do-over. In our model, for reasons that I totally understand, we staffed Minsync Online, the online school that we started shortly after I got here during the height of the pandemic. We staffed it in this model like we staff a bricks-and-mortar high school, like we staff Century or John Marshall or Mayo. There certainly is a logic to that, but the level of budget cut that you saw in the memo would be unsustainable for that school. So we have some homework to do. You can see that when we looked at Minsync Online Secondary, we know one FTE is allocated at 12.4 students. And at John Marshall, which we picked just as an example, it's one, is 21.52. So between now and when we bring you a budget proposal in June, and we'll give you updates before that, we need to go in and take a look in particular at the appropriate staffing model for an online school. I think the reason this happened is because we funded the entire school initially with COVID dollars. And so it was funded as a way to provide fully online synchronous education to kids during the pandemic. We've transitioned that to, away from COVID dollars because of course those all had to be spent by the end of September of last year. But that has meant we've postponed, I think, and now we obviously need to engage in some careful analysis as to what does the funding strategy need to look like from Minsync Online. I personally believe we should for sure continue our support for that school. I think it's doing good things for the kids it's serving, and we can see it grow in the years ahead. But we need to get the funding straight. So as soon as I saw that budget projection, I said to our team, "Someone call Brandon McCraffick so he doesn't jump out a window." Because that, that level of cut would kill the program, and we obviously don't want to do that. I also think frankly, it's insightful to see the difference in staffing models that we have there. So we've learned something, but that is not a recommendation. So that, Madam Chair, is the overview. I'm sure that if you have either questions that go to levels of detail, I'll ask John or Andy to join me for anything. But I don't think they need to come up just yet because I know board members have had a lot of times to ask questions. And so maybe we're more at the statement part of the process.
Okay. So because this is an action item, I will read the resolution. And I want to give, make it clear that this was the superintendent's resolution. And that is why you're going to hear my voice for the next few minutes. Being resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct the superintendent to develop a comprehensive recommendation for the 2025-2026 budget that incorporates the following four components of the balanced budget model. The fixed school staffing component of the budget model should enable the school district's central office leaders to allocate positions to schools through established and publicly available formulas that school principals are not allowed to reallocate at the school site level. The formulas that are utilized to allocate positions in the fixed school staffing component of the model should be determined based upon projected student enrollment, class-sized targets determined by the RPS School Board, contractual agreements with the school district's labor unions, statutory and regulatory requirements, commitments from the 2024 Ignite Student Learning referendum, and other relevant factors. Funding for the fixed school staffing component of the model should be drawn from the school district's general fund allocation from the state of Minnesota, local levies, state and federal funding for special education, and multilanguage learner services, and other appropriate sources. The flexible school funding component of the budget model should enable the school district's central office leaders to allocate funding to schools through established and publicly available formulas that school principals are allowed to utilize to meet the particular needs of their students in school communities. Formulas that determine the amount of flexible school funding that each school receives should be based upon projected student enrollment, the level of the school, elementary, middle, or high school, and the number and percentage of low-income students who attend the school. Each year, school principals should be required to develop and secure central office approval of a plan for use of the flexible school funding resources that is aligned with their school's approved School Continuous Improvement Plan, SKEP, and that meets all relevant statutory and regulatory requirements. Funding for the flexible school funding component of the model should be drawn from the school district's allocation of general fund revenue, compensatory education revenue, achievement and integration revenue, and professional development funding from the state of Minnesota, as well as Title I funding from the federal government. The specialized programs component of the budget model should enable the school district's central office leaders to allocate funding through established and publicly available formulas to programs within RPS that are not K-12 schools. Formulas that determine the amount of funding that specialized programs receive should be based upon projected student enrollment, statutory and regulatory requirements, commitments from the 2024 Ignite Student Learning referendum, and the priorities of the school district's strategic plan. Funding for specialized programs component of the model should be drawn from the school district's general fund allocation from the state of Minnesota, local levies, state and federal funding for special education services, and reallocation of funding from Century, John Marshall, and Mayo High Schools to reflect the participation of their students in PSEO, CTEC, and PTEC classes. The district-wide services component of the budget model should enable the superintendent to allocate funding to departments in the school district's central office to provide leadership and support for the work of the school district as a whole. Allocation of funds within the district-wide services component of the model should be based upon a limited number of cost centers through which the school district accomplishes important functions that can be tracked and managed as a unified set of functions and expenses. The cost center structure of the district-wide services component of the model should be based upon related functions and processes rather than the organizational structure of the school district's central office. Building the district-wide services component around cost centers rather than the school district's current organizational chart will facilitate efficient and effective use of financial and human resources, even as changes are made in the organizational chart over time. The budget model should include a target for the percentage of total district funding that the district-wide services component will receive in the budget for each school year. Establishing and working to meet that target will help to ensure that the size of the school district's total annual expenditure for the district-wide services component increases or decreases as student enrollment in the district's schools and programs increases or decreases. Funding for the district-wide services component of the model should be drawn from the school district's general fund, achievement and integration aid, professional development, special education, and multilingual learning funding allocations from the state of Minnesota, local levies, federal funding for special education services and related services, and other appropriate sources. In order to avoid creating an incentive for schools and programs to hire less experienced and therefore less expensive staff, positions within all four components of the BBM should be allocated based upon average rather than actual salaries. The RPS School Board will review the superintendent's proposal for the 2025-2026 budget that incorporates the four components of the balanced budget model outlined above in a series of meetings in May and June of 2025 and act on the final version of the superintendent's proposed budget at its regular meeting on June 17, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Could you read it again? Twice. It's unmoved.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Board members, I think, I shared with you that one way that we could go through our questions and comments is to go through the major sections of the memo. So I just read the resolution to implement the balanced budget model. The second section is the development of the balanced budget, balanced budget model. Are there any comments to that topic? Or you could just say if you have a question and we'll find the, find the... Director Marvin's raring to go, I can tell.
Yeah, I have a question clearly. I understand that schools will have more autonomy in terms of how they spend a certain amount of their funding, that they will offer the courses required, and they will offer those based on student enrollment. Under the district-wide services potential cost centers, for instance, though, it lists activities and athletics. So every school will get a fund for... So every school will get a fund for activities and athletics. Could one school decide, for instance, that they're going to discontinue their theater program and just spend more money providing additional soccer coaches for an expanded soccer teams and intermural? I'm interested in how the money's spent, but I'm also interested in how equitable it's going to be for kids at different buildings to have opportunities.
Thank you, Chair Nathan and Dr. Marvin. That's why that is not in the flexible school funding category. So that would continue to be centrally allocated but also managed, so we would work with our activities directors on that. So were they to want to discontinue theater, they would have to get approval for that, and we would have a deep discussion. In fact, tomorrow I have a meeting with them about adding boys volleyball, which is something that they've proposed collectively. And so that would continue to be managed in that separate pot and not in the flexible. And that's partly why it would be there. You could just give them an activities budget, but I think that that would potentially result in the kind of... I would hope they wouldn't cut theater, but you know, you could lose that commonality in programming, so that's why it's not in that flexible.
Good, thank you.
Director Whitehorn.
And this may have been answered at some point earlier, but in the flexible school funding examples, and I would just like clarification if I'm misunderstanding. So it's my understanding that with Title I or compensatory funding, some of the positions that are in this flexible model are required with that funding, correct? I just... I'm a little... Maybe I just need a little bit more understanding on what exactly is flexible. So we have a limited number of schools right now who are not being funded. I think there's three or four schools, from what I understand, that are not receiving Title I or compensatory funding. So my question is, it's flexible, but is it flexible? Because if it's required, I mean, I feel like it's flexible with an asterisk, right? Because we're saying it's flexible, but if they receive certain funding, they really can't say, you know, and I'm just throwing this out there, if they're getting so much funding, the federal or state requirement may be that they have to have so many assistant principals, you know? So is there a way to make that clearer? Because the way it presents is if they have decision-making, when, from what I understand, it really, they really don't. It appears like a very wholesome list, but in truth, you know, a lot of these positions are required to be in the school in order for them to receive levels of funding. And I might not... I might be off here, but...
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that, Dr. Whitehorn. Those are actually not required by any of those funding sources. Neither Title nor compensatory requires a specific position. They require to serve a specific type of student. And some of those are in the memo, or student need. So there are nine purposes in Title I. So for instance, with Title, you must do family engagement, and we're committed to do it, but it doesn't actually say exactly which position you would have to structure it. You could potentially do something very innovative where you weren't necessarily doing funding of position. Most schools do have, if they have Title, they fund a position for family engagement coordinator. So all of these positions that are there as examples are authentically flexible. The place where you're correct, the flexible school funding is not totally flexible, is meeting the intended needs of the funding source in terms of service to students. So for instance, you can't use compensatory funding to fund an advanced learning program for middle and upper-income kids. So we will have to build in rules that make sure that even though the positions are flexible, we're meeting the intent of those dollars. Similarly, for instance, with the Title funding, we will be required to make sure that we have a needs assessment that demonstrates that those dollars are going to the, essentially, the weaknesses that are identified in the needs assessment, and that's the mechanism for saying, "We need these reading specialists, we want to do these tutoring programs." And that, the state of Minnesota reviews that annually to confirm that our Title budget is meeting the intents of the federal law. But those positions are not positionally required, it's more the functions. Where we do see, and that's why we tried not to suggest it's flexible, those are the positions that are not flexible because they are required statutorily or things. So you're right, we are... We're being pretty blunt, 80% of the funding is not flexible. It's a bounded 20%, which is an increase over where we are now, but it's not the majority of funding for sure by close.
Okay, so I clarified that. My follow-up question regarding the budget was where you said the... So for certain schools, they get, certain elementary schools get funded a little bit more money, and then you said we would be dispersing those funds over the middle schools and the high schools. How? Like, I guess maybe I didn't understand that. So if the... So I'm just throwing a squib. If Ben Franklin gets X amount of dollars, are we saying that we are taking away from their funding to place it somewhere else, or... And what is the percentage on that? And how are we determining how much of each school's funding is following the student? And I might be a little not super-educated on this, but are we not double-dipping, right? Because doesn't the middle school get funding as well? Or are we trying to... I just am a little confused as to why we have to move funding if every school is funded based on their own enrollment.
So I'm going to ask John or Andy to help me with the exact percentages that we're shifting to for Title, but I'm going to explain it and then make sure that they can help me figure it out. So the federal government allows you to use your Title I dollars in several different ways, and it all depends on, do you want to concentrate the dollars in your highest, highest-poverty schools, or do you want to spread it out somewhat more in your schools that are still serving a lot of low-income kids but not your highest-poverty schools? And it's a percentage that is open to us because we're considered a high-poverty district with more than 35% of our kids who qualify for free and reduced-price lunch. So that's why we have this flexibility. What we have been doing is we have been concentrating our Title funding in schools like, I'll just use a very present example, Riverside, where you've had about 70% of the kids who've concentrated. So that allows us to concentrate those dollars. In Minnesota, we also have compensatory education funding that also goes to schools like Riverside in large dollars. We have not been funding an additional group of elementary schools or our middle and high schools except the area learning center, alternative learning center, because they were 75% more free and reduced, and you have no choice. You have to use Title there if you're 75% or more. So essentially, what we're doing is we're shifting from an option that the federal government gives us, or I'm recommending, that we concentrate all those dollars in a small set of our highest-poverty schools to actually fund schools that still have significant numbers of free and reduced-price lunch, but that are not quite in that same category. And if John or Andy hasn't been able to pull up the specific percentages, or if you've gotten that, we can get that to you. I don't want to say it wrong off the top of my head, but they're statutory allowed by the federal government to do it. So for instance, we couldn't fund Fallwell with Title. There's not enough kids there who generate free and reduced-price lunch. And so that's not even... It's not proposed, and we wouldn't be allowed to do that if we wanted to do that.
So I'm sorry. So just so I'm clear. So is this a funneling issue? Because maybe I don't understand. So my assumption is that if, okay, you use Riverside, right, that, let's say, the higher percentage of those kids are going to be going to Willow Creek, right? Because that's their district. Why is there a reduction?
Because right now, there's no funding for Willow Creek. And so I'm proposing that we expand Title to follow the kids. Exactly that logic. Because we have not been using those dollars in our secondary schools. And at the core of my proposal is to provide them to our secondary schools because those kids are still with us.
Oh, so when the kids all funnel in, the number is reducing?
Well, we are reducing the allocation to that group of elementary schools that has been getting it somewhat in order to fund more of our schools in the Title allocation.
I think I understand. Thank you.
It's a complex system, and I'm frustrated with myself because I'm not immediately remembering the percentages, but we're leveraging, and if John and Andy aren't getting it right away, I don't feel so bad, but we're adhering to statute that allows us to basically concentrate or share those dollars. Looks like the cavalry's coming.
Yeah. Yeah, we're taking about $700,000 out of elementary schools, and we're pushing it into middle schools and high schools. Basically, we're changing the per-pupil funding unit amount. So where we were funding about $1,000 per student in poverty at the elementary schools only this year, we're going to expand...
A subset of elementary schools.
A subset of elementary schools. It's going to be pushed out to more schools at about $400 to $500 per pupil funding unit.
Director Cook.
So I had a question about the cost-center approach, which makes a lot of sense to me. I certainly see cost centers in my day job context, and that seems like a sensible way to track things, excuse me, based on the particular priorities. I'm just reflecting a little bit on, you know, as we change something, and I think this board has done a good job of thinking about the potential negatives of changing from a known structure where we, you know, good, bad, or ugly, at least we know how it works today. And so we, I think, have been focusing a lot on the opportunities for innovation and being responsive, and the benefits that this change could bring about. I'm just... I'm trying to think through, you know, what are we going to be potentially talking about 12 months from now that we thought, oh, jeez, nobody thought that the balanced budget model was going to create, you know, whatever? And the one thing that I just wanted to make sure I asked very explicitly about the shift to the cost center or anything else about allowing the flexible dollars to be allocated or priorities set at the building level is, do we think that that's going to make it more difficult for us to be faithful fiscal stewards of the resources that we're entrusted with, or any challenge in, you know, a successful audit or anything along those lines that, while you might have a plan for it, you would view it as a potential challenge or something that is a potential downside to the shift that we're talking about?
No, I think it's the opposite. I think it's going to improve that. It's going to bring clarity. And as we were discussing as well, actually setting targets at our district-wide service level and saying, "This percentage of the budget is going to be this, and we're going to live within that." And that means if the funding is flat or going up or going down even, we need to make adjustments at the central or the district-wide services level as well to keep our proportion of the budget from not growing over the school's proportion of the budget. So actually, I think it's going to do the opposite. I think we're going to have more clarity, and it's going to help keep us adapting better as the revenues may go up or may go down.
The resolution that Director Nathan just read included a direction for us to give you in June a target for the total cost of what we're now calling district-wide services. And for anybody, especially anybody who's been a teacher or at the school level, what do they cost at the district offices? This deep issue in every school district, because people see us as overhead and like, what do they do down there? And that's probably in any organization, maybe in your corporation, it's endemic. Our early thinking is that within that district-wide services bucket, it's going to break down like this. The total target is going to be about 30% of the total budget, so one-third. Now, you have to remember, a lot of that there is not at all in the Edison Building. It's services that are across the entire, you know, school district. And that of that 30%, 20% will be for the services themselves, and 10% will be for staff. And as we complete that analysis, and if that's the recommendation we bring you, I think over time that could be quite powerful because it could allow you in future budget years to say, "Well, tell me, what's the cost of the central district-wide services staff as a percentage of the total budget?" Hmm, enrollment's... I hope this isn't the case. Enrollment's going down, but the cost of, you're going over target for the cost of central office. Because the danger is always, student enrollment declines in a school, oh, what do you do? You cut staff. But nobody gets cut at the central level because there's no transparency to the idea that the students are getting smaller, the central office should get smaller too. So this would build in some level of transparency. And I think, again, I'm very hopeful in the medium and long term about rising enrollment in Rochester, but especially as we're entering this period of declining K-12 numbers across the district, this is a mechanism, as John was saying, to have the central office and the central services be proportionally bounded so that you would be able to make a decision in future years about, are we spending too much when we're cutting at the site level? I don't know too much, John, if it's ancient history, but I found it fascinating, as you explained to me, why we don't have a cost-center structure right now. That essentially, when you joined the district, for whatever reason, there was a decision to move away from cost centers. We did used to build that because as... The last part of this model that we've gotten into has been this central piece. Most of the work we did was on the site budgets. And as we've dug into this, I kept tripping over the fact that the budget looks like the org chart as opposed to... And that's... The org chart is not disconnected from, like, you know, Will Ruffin's office doesn't include transportation budget. So it's not like it makes no sense, but it's not organized by function. So can you talk a little bit about how that happened historically?
I contacted a predecessor of mine, just on the side, to understand kind of what happened. And part of why it got implemented was to make it easier back in the 90s or whenever it was implemented, to tie these things together versus using the mandated coding structure that MDE makes us use. So it was a way to kind of work within both worlds, but make it more, kind of act like a corporate cost-center type of budget. But that was... The decision was made to move away from that as we were implementing the new Skyward system. That decision, I think, was made in the 2010-ish timeframe. And so as I was getting here in 2011, we were actually redoing our coding to expand the cost center. That was the direction I was operating under. And so we've pretty much operated more under an org chart of assigning our budget codes by the numbering system that MDE has come up with. So I actually see the value in going back to this because I think it will help tie some of these things together better for us.
If you said, for instance, and I apologize, Madam Chair, I'll stop digging too deeply. But if you said to me right now, Kent, what's the cost of leadership development and support? We could pull that together, but we would not be able to push a button and show that to you. Whereas if you really want to strategically talk about how are we investing in our leaders, that's a potential cost center that we would then build the budget around. Right now, we'd have to look at salaries and benefits, like contracts with, you know, a professional development provider, and we'd cobble it together, and we'd say, "Oh, that's how much we spend on leadership." This would be a more functional approach to the budget.
Director Barlow.
Two quick things. When it comes to Title and compensatory dollars, could you speak briefly as to the goal of or usage for, and how, unless it is tied to specific anticipated or targeted outcomes, so redistribution of the money occurs, but we still are having students who are not faring well, even though they're getting all this, if you will, additional monetary support directed towards them? So, and I understand this is about a budget versus the outcomes of the budget, but is it possible for you to potentially at least whet my appetite as to how this potentially will...
Yes, Director Barlow, thank you. At your study session next week, we will present you with an initial list for your conversational reaction of no more than 10 of those outcomes for each level of the system, elementary, middle, and high school. And the proposal will be that that's our North Star. Those are the performance measures we're going to use going forward. And that as we look at school outcomes, which will be a balanced scorecard, it will not just be one test score, as we look at that, that will be what we'll be expecting our school leaders and school improvement teams to allocate, and it's what we should be using at the central level to make those decisions. And I need to be super careful in what I'm about to say because I do not want to disparage people who've been doing great hard work in our system. But to Director Whitehorn's question a moment ago to me about Title I, we have concentrated our Title I dollars in a limited subset of schools that have had low and declining outcomes. We have seen no progress tied to that additional investment for a very long time. Now, that is not just because of the money, but we have right here in Rochester multiple case studies of the fact that concentrating the dollars does not lead to improvements in those outcomes. in those outcomes. And that's the education work. I mean, that's, that's the real work. But getting the dollars so that they actually, that was one reason why I don't like to mess with success. If I was looking at our current funding strategy with Title One and I was seeing this kind of like improvement, I would have said, well, we can't touch that. Now, those schools are still going to be adequately resourced, but we have the same students with us in middle school and high school who also need that additional support. And that's the $700,000 that John was referring to. So the connection between outcomes and these investments is 100% what we're after.
And then finally, 10-month process. There are things that have been discovered along the way that were unknown initially. There may be additional things that manifest themselves along the way. As relates to school improvement teams and the ongoing request that we have received or heard, that's been communicated via public comment period, through companion organizations, PTSA, we want to be involved, we want to. So, and this I get is the budget. In terms of the mechanics, when will there be an opportunity for site leaders, principals to engage their respective communities to potentially actively solicit their input? I think this also rolls back to what Director Whitehorn suggested earlier, that it's not a matter of parents not being interested. It could very well be that when these opportunities are presented, it may not be when they are actually available. So not that I would expect you, and you may, you're a smart guy, I mean, you have a DE. But it's quite possible you might be prepared to offer a comment regarding what that might look like and to reassure communities that, yeah, it is our intent, not just desire, we will be intentional to ensure that there are opportunities for you to provide input.
Yep. Thank you, Director Barlow. We're going to bring you an initial proposal for the school improvement process next week at your study session for discussion and reaction. It builds on work that we've done similar to this work to look at our current process over the last year. So it's not far away. The resolution says two key things. The school must have a school improvement team that brings together diverse stakeholders. They must approve the school improvement plan. The principal develops a budget, but the budget must align with the school improvement plan. And there's a review process that is external to the school to ensure that's the case. Next week, we're going to bring you some more fleshed out ideas on that, like who's required to be on a school improvement team, what perspectives might be encouraged but optional, some early thinking on what process might be used, for instance, majority vote, unanimous vote, to do those kinds of things. So, and then those indicators next week. I'll be honest, in a perfect world, the side of me like, that likes to have everything figured out, we would actually ask you to make the vote on the budget after all of that is fleshed out. The problem with that is that we have got to get going to develop the 2025-26 budget this month because of all the complexities that have to get done. And we're going to ask you next week to also consider parameters for the development of that budget. So there's a little trust involved here to say that we're going to get to it and that the resolution does unambiguously say, it's not just principal as dictator of that flexible funding. It has to be the plan, it has to be rooted in data, there has to be a team that develops it. But yes, the principal does have an increased role because we're asking our principals to step up to provide really transformative leadership here too.
Director McLaughlin?
I have a question about the enrollment projections and it seems like historically we've had that information in an aggregate sense of the entire district. I don't think I've ever seen it broken down by school as it is in the memo. And I want to tie it to the projections and then the related funding as it will play out in this process. I'm curious about what data is used for identifying those projections at the school level and then how much confidence you have in that both now and as you talk about, we'll likely have some updates when we approve the budget.
Let me let John answer that and just say-
Figured it was a John question.
Yeah, well, just as a preface, that we have just decided to update the budget project, the enrollment projection with the former Minnesota State Demographer because the projection we've been using since shortly after I got here has, it certainly has not been wildly wrong, it's been a little discrepant, but we want to make sure that we're looking at it. So want to talk about how those worked?
Yeah, so for purposes of this planning where we're at so far, as we rolled up numbers, so for example, in elementary school, we took off the fifth graders and pushed them into sixth grade. And we moved all the other grades, all the kids in K through four, up a grade. Then for kindergarten, which is really the biggest unknown, we assumed about 90-something percent of this year's kindergarteners would be the number we'd have in that school next year, again, to kind of assume for some declining enrollment due to birth rates. So then we applied that all the way through for sixth to eighth grade schools and ninth to 12th grade as well. This week, what our process is, on Friday, we take our first cut of numbers of students that have enrolled because we've had kindergarten applications or enrollments ready, or we've been collecting them since December, around December 1st. So we take our first batch of kindergarten enrollments and we start actually dealing with real students and real numbers now and we start the actual staffing process or preparing budgets and allocations based on numbers. And that's not the only cut of data we're going to take. We'll probably take it every other Friday from there on through the whole staffing process so that we're always dealing with numbers that are no out of date more than about two weeks.
And how confident are you in the numbers that are in the memo currently? Would you, can you put in some sort of number?
Well, based on that Andy did them, I am very confident because of the processes he was in rolling them all up and school by school, grade by grade. So, yeah, those are pretty accurate. But we'll start to take real numbers and then, of course, through this whole process, we've also, since early December, had the schoolment application open so that people who want to do self-transport or apply for other schools, and we've been taking those applications and that's going to create movement and change and do pluses and minuses all through the system. So that's, that's why we do actually run the numbers every other Friday from now through staffing season.
Thank you.
Director Whitehorn?
Two questions, I'm going to ask them both and then maybe we can yes or no them. So first thing was that I see that in the specialized program and in the district-wide potential cost centers, driver's education is repeated and I'm not sure if that was intentional, if that is an error. And then secondly, we have, my question is regarding housing stability, interpreters, transportation. I know those are district-wide funding, but there are certain schools that have more issue with those particular concerns, as you said earlier, due to poverty rates or different things in the schools. And I know that that has been an ongoing issue, just as a community member here in Rochester, that we often run out of funding in those spaces fairly quickly. With the, with the buzz, with the model that we are going to vote on tonight, which I think was overall well-done, is there any opportunity, as was stated earlier, as we work through this and we go, this needs to be more flexible because we really cannot say that Riverside is not going to need more money for housing stability because this is an issue at Riverside. Is there an option to move anything into another bucket as we build this budget out or are we just kind of stuck with it? And if, you know, you know what I mean? And if we can't move it around or is there an opportunity to put things in multiple buckets? Like, I don't know if the driver's education is supposed to be in multiple buckets, but is it an option to say, well, there needs to be also a flexible funding for interpreters or there needs to be some flexible funding for housing stability because these are issues that are specialized to, are directly related to poverty, which we just can't say we're going to give every school X amount of dollars. For instance, we just did have this fire in one, and I think that is in the Riverside district. So their housing stability dollars are not going to be equal to or the same even as another school that may have that same amount of Title One or compensatory funding. So now this school is getting multiple calls, but there's not, you know, there's no flexibility for their staff to say, we can, you know, request additional dollars. And I know that might have been a wrong question, but I'm not sure how that works. And then you mentioned something about a 17-year cycle for playgrounds and maybe, I don't know if you were just throwing that number out there, but my question was why, why 17 years? Is there a reason why we got to wait two days?
Number of our, one a year. So the number of schools that we would have. So we could, we'd have enough money to upgrade one playground a year.
Oh, okay.
And so we'd be on that cycle. So that was the logic of that one.
Okay.
I'm very impressed with your early attention to detail. I think you and our chair are going to get along very well and make my, make my life challenging in a good way. I think either the driver's ed is reflective of the fact that we have two programs. We have a longstanding one at the area learning center, alternative learning center, and we started a new one when I got here that was for low-income kids who couldn't afford it in the traditional high schools. And we may need to clean that up. I don't know John or Andy. Yeah, so that, okay, so one is the ALC program that's longstanding, been at ALC for ALC kids. Then we started another one for kids at the other schools who needed financial assistance to pay for driver's ed, so those are the two. In terms of the support for kids who are living in a family that's housing unstable right now, in some ways, the term flexible school funding for the, this category is right but wrong. It's right because it would be more flexible for the sites, but it implies that the other dollars are not flexible. And in fact, they are very much flexible and we allocate and reallocate those housing stability resources, whether it's staff time or funding for somebody who's getting evicted, based on changes at the site level and needs that we see. So those are flexible too. They're not something a principal has any flexibility with. Like Riverside, they would need to be talking to us and saying, we have these needs, you know, for our families and then we'd be looking at allocating those additional dollars. They can use their Title One allocation for some housing support. So that's another possibility. That could be some additional flexible. But when you're seeing the housing piece and the cost center there, that, the housing stability, those would be flexible in the sense that we would allocate them every year to meet the needs, but they wouldn't be under the control of a principal individually. Though we're getting all of our information about where those dollars are needed from our staff at the site, like our community schools coordinators and others.
Well, only as, the reason why I ask specifically about those areas is I do know that some of the schools, some of the principals have actually gone outside for funding. So they've been writing grants, doing things, which is fine, but that's why I was kind of under the impression that maybe it wasn't as accessible for dollars. Transportation is a problem in Rochester, you know, housing stability has been a problem. So I just was wondering if that, what was the transparency with that as far as how it's funded? Because unfortunately, even though the school is not, I mean, for instance, housing stability shouldn't be the go-to, it is slowly becoming that way, you know, for some reason. So that's why I asked.
Yeah. I could certainly say the dollars we have for that, and we work with Olmsted County a lot on that, are nowhere near sufficient to meet the need. And it might be something, Madam Chair, that we want to look at putting an update for the board on the board calendar on our housing work because we haven't done that. And it's not something that occurred to me until this moment, so it might be good to put that on the calendar and bring you some information on what we're doing around eviction prevention and stabilization and sometimes resources to help a family bridge. And you're right, it is something that is a subject of grants. Part of our referendum strategy is going to be greatly increasing the funding that we hopefully bring in to support that kind of work because we're going to have a position to facilitate the development of those grants. Because you're right, right now, it's mostly someone in the school writing it themselves. And so we think we can significantly increase that support for this work, so.
And that may help with some of the other outcomes as well. I would think housing stability has a lot to do with long-term students, you know, our kids not moving around so much.
Did you also have a question about the interpreters, did I hear you say?
Yes, I kind of included them all together, transportation interpreters and housing stability, driver's ed. I just know that those are places where oftentimes grassroots organizations often get reached out for, for funding or help. You know, they start with RPS and then they reach out to Hispanic Alliance or, you know what I mean? There seems to be a lot of footwork that is done in order to cover those areas. So since we're talking about funding on the budget, I was just wondering where, you know, is there flexibility in that space or is that something that may need its own bucket? Because they are, transportation and housing stability alone are huge, huge issues right now in Rochester. And we keep coming up a little short, you know? We, right now, have kids that are not getting to school and we're running out of transportation dollars, from what I understand as a community member. You know, so these are things that I, you know, I know they're thrown in there, but they have a direct impact on our students and their results. If kids can't get to school and they don't have stable housing, all the stuff that we're doing doesn't do anything if we can't get them there and they can't get a meal and get to sleep, you know? So I don't know if these are areas that we need to maybe look at a little bit more in-depth. I know they, we have to, you know, an allocation for them, but I know that it is a big concern for a large subset of our community right now.
Yeah, that's a good example and kind of also to Director Cook's question about the cost centers. This was our first cut at it. I could see interpreters being broadened to language support. Because right now, what that is, it's the people who sit down the hall here. But then we have a task force that Momsue Knutson and Natalia Benjamin are working on to, and others, to significantly strengthen all of the language support we support for kids and families that don't speak English, from translations to things. So that cost center, right now, I think we were thinking of the people who directly do interpretation, but we have also a lot of need for translation of materials. So when we design the cost centers, we're going to have to make it like a decision about what's the most useful way for decision-makers to look at that work, to fund it. Because if we had interpreters here and translation services here, those actually maybe should be combined because it's all about giving families, you know, access to services in the language they understand.
Board members, any other questions? I just want to say that, and I think you alluded to it earlier, about the level of transparency at this point in the budget process. I think we'd shortly be getting the staffing model document. But we've never seen amounts by school in dollar amounts. Usually we don't see anything like that until the budget document where you give us that chart in very teeny tiny print that shows the various FTEs by category. And by then, all the decisions are made. One of the reasons why I'm excited about moving forward with this model is I, I don't want to overlook the recognition of the current state that you put in your memo and you've mentioned a number of times, which is, we have significant differences in a wide range of student outcomes across schools, particularly when examining outcomes by race and other student characteristics using a highly centralized system of funding and staffing schools. But if we can give the schools the flexibility to allocate the resources based on the needs of the students in their schools, the data, the conversation with the staff, we're bringing that decision-making down to that school level for 20, an average of 20% of the budget. But I think it also has brought an awareness to the other buckets of dollars about how all of those other buckets have to serve the needs of the students in the schools. All that data analysis that the SKIPS are going to be doing is going to inform what we know we have to do even at a central level. So I am ready to take a vote if everybody else is. So I'm not reading the resolution again.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution has been approved. Thank you, board members, Superintendent, Mr. Carlson. My next item is the school board handbook. This is an action item that we have discussed at the December 10th and December 17th meetings. Be it resolved that the school board of ISD 535 approve the school board handbook for 2025 and schedule an annual review of the handbook for December of 2025 for approval at the first meeting in January of 2026.
Move approval.
Second. It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Hearing, none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved. The next action item is our school board budget and member compensation. This is an annual agenda item that we have started to look at in January. So as part of the budget development process, we can give direction to the superintendent and Mr. Carlson as to where to set our school board budget. In 2024-25, it was set at 251,700- In 2024-25, it was set at $251,739. The major components, and I won't list the dollar values because they are all in the agenda item, is our School Board Compensation, which is currently set at $16,000 per board member with a $1,600 additional stipend for board chair. Our salaries, benefits, insurances, and taxes primarily related to our share of the assistant school board clerk. Dues, membership, and licenses that the School Board has with some of our professional organizations and professional development training. Contracted services, which are mostly related to the board chair of legal services. Travel and conferences, primarily the MSBA Leadership Conference, but also the opportunity for two board members to attend, attend the COSBA National Conference each year. And then supplies and materials. So, given the information that is in the agenda regarding the, all, all the categories except for School Board Compensation, the recommendation is that we keep those amounts the same. There's no increase in the annual, the assistant school board clerk costs. There's no increase in the dues or membership or licenses so that we can set those categories at the same level as our budget for the 2024-2025 school year. Do we have any discussion or consensus on all of those categories besides School Board Hearing none, then we can set those at the same level. And then, School Board Compensation, our best practices suggest that we review member compensation on an annual basis at the first meeting in January. I do not have a recommendation. So, board members, any questions or comments? Director Work.
So, I'll just take a little historical review. Back in 2019, School Board Director Amundsen, Amundsen at the time and I reviewed where our compensation was at that time, which was $7,200 per year. And that compensation was set in 1985. So, we were looking at the same compensation from 1985 until 2019. The first time that School Board got any compensation was in 1976 at $3,600. So, there was only a nine-year gap between $3,600 and a change in 1985. But between 1985 and 2019, there were, it was more years than that. It was quite a period. So, we were looking at this and in January of, January 28th of 2020, and if you want to review the discussion of that conversation, it begins at the 1 hour, 46 minute and 23 second mark on that tape. So, we recommended at that time, looking at the Social Security Cost of Living increases and also the Department of Labor's Consumer Price Index. And at that time, in early 2020, it was determined that to keep it purely lined up with inflation over some thirty-some years, that compensation would be $17,000. That was in 2020. I think for some reason, we dropped it to $16,000. It seemed like a more round number or easier or, you know, this was a big jump in salary where we're also looking at the time at some of the projected increases that the city council and county commission were setting. And we decided that to really take a huge bite at that time would not be terribly prudent. So, I looked at the Social Security Cost of Living increases between nineteen, or 2019 and today. However, I only, I decided that since our compensation had been set at $16,000 as of July 1st, 2021, that it made sense to just look at any change of the Social Security increase between 2021 and now. So, I bounced some ideas off of Mr. Carlson at the last minute, and we came up with about the same, the same numbers in several different categories. I was going to recommend that to keep somewhat in line with inflation, that our salaries could be increased to $19,000 per board member. I'd also like to point out that over the three years that we didn't raise our, our salaries, that we saved the district about $41,000 by not doing that. And then, the School Board Chair would still remain at a 10% increase. We got to the numbers originally by taking some surveys of our current board at the time, just about how many hours they spent in board work, community, committee meetings, meetings, et cetera, and also looking at other districts of our size and what they compensated their school board meetings. So, as I said, the compensation that was approved on May 25th, 2021 of $16,000 was a thousand dollars less than what lined up with the Social Security COLA. And we didn't consider any inflation, inflation adjustment between the time we did that original, original study and the time that we changed our compensation. So, Mr. Carlson came up with the Social Security number. It was $19,538. So, I think $19,000 would not be out of line for that. And then, another, I'm sorry, that was, back up. The Social Security one was $19,482. If we were to look at what our employee contract settlements have been during this time, that would bring our compensation to $19,538,000. If we looked at what the general education basic formula has been, it would only bring it up to $17,736. My recommendation would be that we move forward with $19,000, increase to $19,000 with an additional $1,900 for the chair. And then, moving forward so that we don't have to come back and wait three years or four years or thirty years to make another adjustment, that we have some kind of metric that we can assign to that so that the increases reflect other things that are happening in the budget or inflation or whatever metric you might choose. And I would certainly, you know, be interested if Mr. Carlson would have any recommendations on whether or not that would be helpful to have, you know, as other things inflate, that the school board salary would inflate along with it or, you know, certainly open to board discussion.
Board members, any, do you have any comments or responses?
I have a question. Is it possible for us to pass this resolution without determining tonight what a new School Board Compensation might be? I mean, can we, can we postpone that decision till a later meeting about our compensation?
I'm asking Mr. Carlson that I, I think that's probably true. We don't have a hard deadline coming up on that, if that's. I think the other question I have is initially when we, when we set our compensation, it was starting on July 1st. However, the School Board Chair salary runs from January through December. And would it be possible for us to align our salary increase or decrease, if the case may be up with the calendar year rather than the fiscal year? And if which case, I would recommend strongly that we not wait until January 1st, 2026 because we'll then be a year behind, but to make that retroactive to January 1st of 2025, unless that's too complicated for the finance department, which I think it's not. I mean, we're talking about $23,000 of increase.
And I think that's a good question for us to ask as we consider this because this discussion item is usually based to give guidance to the, to Mr. Carlson for our role in the budget that begins July 1st, which is why we're having the conversation now so that it can be worked into. And I think another question I would have is if we, I agree with you, Director Martin, this, we can separate the resolution if it's the will of the board and add it to another, a meeting and gather some more information. Because my other question would be what can we afford? Given that we don't have a line item from any of our revenue sources, whether it's state, local levies, we weren't included in the referendum. So, that would be another good conversation is where would this money come from? But I think what you're saying, Director Work, and with the increase, is that it would be an additional $23,000 increase in the School Board Budget to accommodate the increase in School Board Salary. So, if I am not hearing any objections from board members about moving this to a separate agenda item, we could pass a resolution regarding the remainder of the School Board Budget? Or we could wait and do it all together at a later date, since we have time? What's your preference?
Well, if I may, Madam Chair, under the current resolution, it does appear as if that option is there already. And certainly, I would be in favor of voting on number one in its entirety, but also speak against voting on item two, which would be the increase tonight, in that there is not a exigent reason to do so. We could have included it and can as a regular agenda item and allow it to go through the normal course, allow public comment, things such as that there. And I wouldn't want to create the impression that when it comes to us, we, you know, just my thoughts. I mean, you're the chair, of course.
And I'd take all of your thoughts and your advice.
I, I support what Director Bral is saying.
So, did I hear to vote on the first part tonight and then vote on the, or do have a compensation item at a later date?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will read the resolution for.
Just to make a motion to amend.
Well, I haven't read the resolution yet, so we're good.
All right.
So, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 directs the superintendent to use the parameters agreed upon by the board at the January 7th, 2025 meeting for the 2025-26 budget as follows. With necessary increases for inflation or other cost increases. $62,839 for salaries, benefits, insurance, and taxes. $36,000 for dues, memberships, and licenses. $18,000 for contracted services. $17,000 for travel and conferences. And $4,300 for supplies and materials.
Move approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So, that portion of the resolution has been approved and we will A, B, C, D the compensation conversation for perhaps our next regular meeting. Thank you. Thank you. 9.1, other business, board questions and responses. The questions submitted by board members are available in this agenda item. The A, B, C, D 2025 updates, the current version is available in the agenda item, and we have added a few to the A, B, C, D tonight. If anybody has any other items to raise for consideration, you can do so now or we offer the opportunity at every meeting. Upcoming board meeting dates, January 14th at 5:30 is a study session, January 21st at 5:30 is a regular meeting, and on February 18th at 5:30, we have a special session on field trip fees with a regular meeting immediately following. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:52 PM.